Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. And I'm, I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Education Regular Meeting, in person and available via Zoom. I'd like to ask our Student Board Member Tour to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Board Member Tour, Student Board Member Tour. We'll begin now with introductions of Board Members and Staff. My name is Adamis Scotto, and I'm the President of the Board, and we will go to my right.
Good evening, Nancy Altman, Vice President.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. Teri Eves Knutson, Trustee.
So happy to be here and see all of you, especially our students here tonight. So thanks for attending, Mary Patterson, Trustee.
Hello, welcome. Iván Rosales Montes, Trustee.
Good evening and welcome, Pamela Gardner, Trustee.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. John Horner, Trustee.
Hi, everyone. Jazareen Tour, Student Board Member.
Kelly Schrefer, Executive Secretary to the Superintendent.
Good evening, Carmen García, Superintendent. Thank you so much for being here, in person and also via Zoom. I'd like to address our Spanish-speaking parents and community members.
Pat Sanchez, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening, Penny Timo, Assistant Superintendent, Business Services.
Good evening, Buenas tardes. Diana Jimenez, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Good evening, Dr. Julia Gary Hasinto, Director of Elementary Education.
Good evening, Lisa Lee, Director of Fixle Services.
Wait. Thank you, everyone. We'll now move for the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Trustee Montes. Can I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Knutson. All those in favor, whoops, excuse me. Student Board Member. Thank you. Colleagues, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you. Motion carries. Close session, action report. The the only thing I can report out is the the Board voted five to two to deny the appeal in case number zero-two dash two-three dash two-two-four, consideration of student record challenge. The vote again was five-two with Board Members Montes, Trustee Patterson, Trustee Horner, and Trustee Knutson, all voting in favor. Trustee Gardner and Trustee Altman voted to deny. I'm sorry, voted no on the, on the, on the appeal request. I'm sorry. And myself, excuse me. Me. I voted in favor of it. All right. All right. Next up is recognitions and presentations. Want to recognize outgoing Student Board Member and our, our, our alternate, alternate Student Board Member. And the Board will recognize the Student Board Member and alternate Board Members for their service to the Board and present them with a plaque. Also, a card. Both of them will have cards from, signed by all of our Board Members. And the best part of it is some chocolates. Which I'm surprised they actually made it to the meeting. Given my they were in danger. So if you see a broken seal, it's, it's by accident. So if we can do that. All right.
Trustee, Student Board Member Tour and Student Alternate, Alternate Student Board Member Shombach, if you guys could please come up to the front so we can acknowledge you.
Yes, right there.
Gym class, you're doing laps.
Right. I'm just going to take this whole thing with me. Yeah, I got it. You know, we didn't rehearse this. There we go. If I could just go ahead and read their plaques. With our greatest appreciation, we hereby present Jazareen Tour. Recognition for your contribution to the Morgan Hill Unified School District as a Student Board Representative for the 2023-2024 school year. Thank you so much. And for Robert, again, with our greatest appreciation, we hereby present Robert Shombach. Recognition for your contributions to the Morgan Hill Unified School District as the Alternate Student Board Representative for the 23-24 school year. Thank you so much. We're going to take a photo? No, 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 yeah, not so fast. We're going to take a photo. Are your families here?
My mom's recording.
Your mom's here? Are you, are your family here? Okay, all right. There we go.
There's actually enough room, so you guys don't have to stand behind anyone.
Usually somebody's behind me.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Are there any family members?
Well, we've got Ma. Ma is up here. Ma, come on in. She's recording everything. So we, we, we can record you. We changed places there.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Great, thank you.
All right. Next item is G1, approve the minutes from the Regular Board Meeting of May 21st, 2024. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from May 21, 2024.
Thank you, Trustee Patterson. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Horner. All those in favor, whoops.
Student Board Member Taylor.
Hi.
Colleagues, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, opposed, excuse me. Say no. All right. Motion carries.
And I abstain.
And you abstain?
Yes.
All right.
Noted.
Great. All right. Next item is public comment. Members of the public may address the Board on any topics listed on the agenda. However, the Board may not discuss issues raised that are not listed on the agenda. Topics not on the agenda that are brought to the Board's attention may be investigated by the Administration and a report made to the Board publicly or privately at a future meeting. Comments by visitors shall not exceed three minutes. First up is Brianna McWilliams. Hi, Brianna. Do we have the timer set?
Yep.
Okay, please. Brianna, hang on. We don't know if your mic is on.
It's the green light on. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. All right.
I was saying that I hate public speaking, but I love our students. I love our teachers. And I wanted to lend my voice to other voices that have been raised and speak tonight. So hello, Superintendent García and trustees. First of all, I want to thank you for the time you have given this year to serve the students and the schools and for being here tonight. As I mentioned earlier, my name is Brianna. My older child attended PA Walsh K through fifth. And my younger child is currently a third grader at Walsh. I have always made an effort to be very involved in my children's schooling through engaging with teachers as well as participating in and volunteering for most school events. Therefore, I have had many years of interacting with teachers of various grade levels, hearing about what works well and what does not. I have also spoken with many parents in home and school club meetings as well as during many informal conversations around the school. So when I speak of growing levels of frustration with what is happening at our schools, it does not come from just a single conversation with just one person. These many conversations have allowed me to discover the vast number of talented, resourceful, passionate, smart, and caring people we have in the Morgan Hill Unified School District. Some of them are here tonight. I have heard these individuals not only raise frustrated concerns but provide thoughtful recommendations for change as well. I am here to ask you to listen to them and consider implementing some of the changes they are suggesting. Please remember, we are a team. Our questions, suggestions, and recommendations come from a place of concern for the students and a desire to improve the situation. And the current imbalanced budget and disastrous LCAP findings show there is much that could be improved. We all want our students to succeed. I think that by listening more to parents and teachers, our district would see more success. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna. My next speaker is Diego Ochoa. And I believe he's on Zoom.
Hi, folks.
Diego, are you there? We can hear you, Diego.
All right.
Hang on just for a second. All right, please.
Thank you so much. First of all, great comments from from our parents and just folks. So thank you for that. We really love the comments. Tonight, I have a short message. It is a good evening, first and foremost, to everybody who's in attendance. My name is Diego Ochoa, and I serve as Region One Director for the Bay Area Section of the California Association of Latino Superintendents and Administrators. CALSA is a community of diverse leaders skilled in addressing the needs of Latino and Latina and all students. CALSA is a professional association that advocates for the continued development of a quality public education with over 1,000 members. It is one of the premier educational administration groups in the state. We aim to provide leadership in school administration and instructional capacity. And we work collaboratively with other state and national administrative organizations to initiate research and provide data. Tonight, it is my honor to announce that Dr. Carmen García has been recognized as the 2024 CALSA Region One Superintendent of the Year. Dr. García is just now finding out about this honor. So first and foremost, congratulations, Dr.. She was selected from among the over 100 superintendents in the following counties: Santa Clara, San Mateo, Alameda, Contra Costa, Sonoma, and San Francisco. She was selected due to her outstanding leadership, her incredibly strong equity focus, her progress towards deep parental engagement, and her impact on the profession. Dr. García is a respected and admired leader in our field. Kudos to Dr. García for making gains in the Morgan Hill Unified School District to create systems for student support, increase access for educational courses for students, prioritize deep parental involvement, and develop key new partnerships within the Morgan Hill community. And with that, I bid you a good evening. Congratulations.
Thank you, Diego. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Anahita Yazdi.
Hello. First and foremost, I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to Trustee Altman, Trustee Knutson, and Trustee Gardner for their unwavering courage and commitment to our community. Your vote of non-satisfactory performance evaluation for Dr. García reflects the concerns shared by many of us, and we stand united with you. I also want to address the critical state of our district tonight, from academic performance to financial instability, lack of leadership accountability, and most importantly, the misguided priorities noted in the LCAP. Our district's academic performance, as laid out on the proposed LCAP, is nothing short of disastrous. Our tests' scores in all categories have plummeted to an all-time low, which is currently 20 points below the state standard, and our chronic absenteeism has risen significantly since 2019. The glaring signs of failure plus the unethical hiring practices should warrant a clear vote of no confidence, and yet Dr. García received a satisfactory review from this board last week. On the topic of financial instability, the projected deficit for the next year alone exceeds $17 million. This is a grossly imbalanced budget not to be approved. Shockingly, the proposed five-and-a-half million dollars in cuts primarily affecting teachers and the school site staff lacks transparency in these financial reports. We, the public, lack, still lack clarity on the number of teachers impacted and the clear impact on class sizes of the student learning at each school site. Also important to note, multi-year projections reveal a severe decline in reserves from 20% to nearly 5% by 26-27, placing us at a very real risk of fiscal insolvency and potential state takeover as warned by the county since January of this year. Despite these financial troubles, the proposed LCAP aims to expand professional development allocations across all goals, exacerbating our structural deficit. Notably, increased PD and training are mentioned as a solution to address chronic absenteeism. The effective of, effectiveness of the proposed solution is questionable for students who are absent due to transportation challenges, illnesses, or simply going on mid-year vacations. More professional development wouldn't be addressing any of these root causes. Additionally, the proposed LCAP emphasizes expanding the face center while also a $2 million investment aims to create community schools through Action 30N. Why allocate funds redundantly when both serve similar purposes? In summary, US the Board should not approve the proposed budget or the LCAP. Advisory committee puts our student success first and advocates for fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron. Our next speaker is Ron Lucero. Sorry, sir. I apologize for that. Please come on up. Hello, Ron.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Ronald Cicero. I've been and lived in Morgan Hill for 45 years. I'm a retired school teacher, taught 45 years. And I have a bachelor's, master's, administrative counseling, and even a driver's ed credential. So I've dealt with six administrators in, in my career. And only one takes the time to meet with parents on a monthly basis to listen to their concerns, mainly their complaints. I've gone to a lot of these meetings, and Dr. García has been wonderful. She takes copious notes. I know she follows up on her requests. And I would like to see the community, administrative team, the teachers, and the parents become less hateful and more cooperative. We have too many hates going on in our time. It's time to compromise. It's time to get behind the system. And I like to tell the parents, you have great concerns, and you have given her great information. But most of it is complaining, and no one is offering solutions. I know the budget is a problem. It's a problem all over the state of California because the program that was funded, the governor forgot to tell the schools it's only for two years, but they still want. I know the teachers are overwhelmed with all of the new things added to reading, writing, and arithmetic. And they don't want any more new stuff. But you got to get together. You got to come together, and you all have to compromise. This is a great school district. My kids went here. My grandkids are going here. I'm here to back up Dr. García. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. My next speaker is Tina Kunz. Tina, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Never. No one ever does. I forgot to pronounce them correctly. It's Kunitz.
Kunitz.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, I'm going to go a little off topic now because of everything. I didn't know all of this was inspiring. Congratulations. You deserve it. I think I've worked for many, many superintendents. And I appreciate how student-centered you are. We need more of that. And you've got 100% confidence vote from me. And I'm excited. I was here to see you get your award. You deserve it. But I'm here as a representative of Antebetto Mathematics Department. And I too am very frightened and need to hurry up. I talk too much. So first of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Jimenez for setting up the math task force. He dived into a few of the chapters of the new math framework because I do feel that, especially in the high schools, we need a change for math. We definitely do. And I appreciate that, and I hope it becomes part of our PD, as I have expressed to Teresa during leadership meetings. We all know math is indispensable tool that empowers individuals to explore the world, make informed decisions, and continue to society's progress. The economic returns on math education have been well documented. Just as we all know, college students with certain majors tend to make more. Studies also show, many studies also show courses that students take in high school make a difference when those courses are mathematics. Among workers of the same level of education, whether it's high school or college or graduate school, those with more math have higher wages and are less likely to be unemployed. Our concern is cyber high. It is not giving children a solid foundational mathematics. Counselors are telling students they can get it done in front of parents and other teachers that they can get this, they can get their math credit in three days on cyber high. Well, this is hurting math so much, so much for our children because they're not getting their foundation, and it becomes one failure after another for them. They can't succeed in this course if they do the three-day insta-course in cyber high. And our department's very and I thank you for your consideration. And I thank you because you're amazing, Dr. García, and I appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Armando Benavides.
Hello, Armando.
Good afternoon, trustees. First off, I want to congratulate Dr. García for a well-deserved award. It really shows that you're making great headways for our district. So last week, I attended the Economic Mobility Symposium. It was an event hosted by the city of Morgan Hill. And it was great to see Superintendent Dr. García and several trustees present. Dr. García served as a panelist and spoke about how important education is for the economic mobility of our future. for the economic mobility of our future district graduates. At the symposium, it was reported that in order to live here in Morgan Hill and make your financial ends meet, one has to earn $62 per hour. Let me say that again, $62 per hour. That's $128,960 per year. Most of the jobs here in Morgan Hill don't pay that. So that means that a lot of our families are spending a lot of time in their car, traveling in and out of our city to go look for work in pursuit of those better paying jobs north in Silicon Valley, wherever. The event began with a short story depicting the struggles faced by low income families. One man reported that he worked two jobs and that he left his home early in the morning and returned late at night. All he could do is see his, his kids go to sleep at night and when he got home to see him sleeping already. He said the only time that he got to spend time with his children was on the weekends. Imagine that. His narrative reminded me of the struggles of many of our district's low income families. Many of our low income families have both parents working, but probably in most cases their combined earnings still do not up to $62 per hour. So it all means that all of their earnings have to go to pay for their basic needs, housing, food, shelter. They work long hours and come home tired. Then I thought of all the good things that the district does to support our low income families and their students thanks to Dr. Garcia. And of course, all the trustees and all the money that comes in, free lunch, before and after school daycare, after school tutoring, community outreach provided by our community liaisons and social workers that have been brought on board, the FACE program, F A C E, the support and teaching from our dedicated teachers and classified staff. These are, these are, these are the services that are all providing support for those students that those students need because their parents are working hard to make ends meet. I'm glad that Dr. Garcia's comments during the panel discussion reflected a deep professional understanding of the struggles our low income families face and the support they need to ensure that their children get closer to that $62 an hour job. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rachel Schaefer, who is on Zoom.
Hi, I'm signed up to speak on an agenda item K1, not public comment.
Okay, Rachel, we're going to call you back with that agenda item. All right. Next, next speaker is Sarah Laws. She's also, and she's on K1. All right. So that, I believe that concludes. Do we have somebody else? Oh. We have one other, one other person. And is, is Robert also part of that? All right. So we have two more, two more speakers. Robert Zapata. Robert, are you here? There you go. Come on up, Robert.
Good evening. I just wanted to make a comment. You know, a lot of the parents are here regarding the budget, you know, financial issues and stuff like that. Whether, whatever side you are on, it's interesting how regardless what topic it's about, aside from the budget, there's one thing that always brings parents together. And that is regarding their children. And so what I'm here to discuss about today is regarding a bill that's currently being debated at Sacramento regarding AB 1955, the Support Academic Futures and Educators for Today's Youth Act. This is regarding LGBTQ. And I just want to read something here. This bill would prohibit school districts, county offices of education charter schools and the state special schools and a member of the governing board or body of those educational entities from enacting or enforcing any policy rule or administrative regulation that requires an employee or contractor to disclose any information regarding the people, I always have trouble pronouncing this word, pupils' sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression to any other person without the pupil's consent unless otherwise required by law as provided. Now, of course, this is going to be voted in, so this would make it law. And so it would eliminate that transparency between schools and parents. And you know, there's this notion that the LGBTQ community doesn't get, doesn't get enough recognition. Well, you know, as I've noticed, the, the progressive pride flag is flying at this district and many other districts across California. The state Capitol, I'm pretty sure the White House too, but that's more federal, so I want to keep it local. And so that, that notion is just absolute nonsense. And I want to mention this real quick. I'm a religious person. And so I just want to mention this. 2 Corinthians 11:14, "No wonder for Satan himself masquerades as an angel of light. It is not surprising then if his servants also masquerade as servants of righteousness, their end will be what their actions deserve." Now, masquerading as an angel of light, you know, the colorful, the colors from the flag, all the parades, you know, and it always attacks children. And I specifically mentioned attacks because it takes away their innocence. And so I just want parents to be aware of that, be aware of this bill. Take note of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Cindy Ramirez. Dr. Jimenez, you'll be translating. All right. And, and again, if we could kind of break up the, the translation a little bit, there, there we go.
Hola, buenas tardes. Estoy aquí. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre el esfuerzo que se está haciendo que nuestros, para nuestros hijos. Se sientan apoyados ya que el tener los programas de tutoría, ferias de recursos, pláticas de drogas y suicidios, entre otros, esos nos ayudan a que nuestros padres que tienen que trabajar, nuestros hijos tengan herramientas para que, para que no, que, para que no caigan en el abismo de los vicios y dejen de estudiar. Por lo tanto, les pido que sigamos trabajando para el bienestar de nuestros hijos y tengamos más hijos graduados. Gracias.
Hello and good evening. Today I'm here to talk about the effort to, that we're doing in order for our children to be, to feel supported and to have programs such as tutoring, Resource Fair, the chats about against drugs and prevention of suicide among others. This helps the parents who have to work to be able to have the tools necessary to help their children so that they don't fall in this abysm of the vices and so that they can study. And therefore I'm asking you to keep working for the welfare of all of our children so that they have, so we have more children who are graduating. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Our, our next speaker is Sally Casas.
Good evening. My name is Sally Casas. Thank you so much, Dr. Garcia, for letting us, letting me speak. Board, board trustees, parents, students, teachers, and community members. First, I'd like to offer my condolences to all of the voters who thought they were electing a person dedicated to the goals and policies of the Morgan Hill Unified School District and its board. Second, I'm not sure why the trustee who with malicious and negligent intent stepped on to federal, state, and county funded property to disrupt the education of high school students while they were work, while they worked on their classroom projects, according to the Morgan Hill Life newspaper. Most elected officials strive to listen to their constituents and district community members instead of ridiculing, criticizing, and admonishing their children to fulfill a misguided, right wing biased agenda. I'm not only appalled to know about the unprofessional behavior by this trustee, I'm asking for her removal on my belief she has committed inappropriate behavior with minors while acting with the authority as a Morgan Hill Unified School District Board Trustee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casas. Okay. All right. Moving on to communications, we have a report from our student board member.
Hi, everyone. So I don't have an update today because it's the end of the school year. But I did just want to say thank you for allowing me to have the time to be here and give my input on to our district. I also want to say congratulations to all of the classes 2024 graduates and good luck to everyone continuing school next year.
Nice. Robert, Robert, would you, would you like to come up? What are you eating? Chocolate?
Not yet. When I get into the car, I'll do it. Thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity. It's been a great learning experience. I have got to know almost everybody on this board and everybody here today. Well, and I really appreciate everything you guys have taught me. And I can't wait to continue my passion in public service and education. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robert. Trustees, I, I wondered if you have any quick comments regarding our student board representatives? Anyone?
I'm happy to, thank you, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. President. I'm happy to speak on behalf of my fellow trustees if they so desire. Having observed many, many student board members over the past years and some of whose parents have been seated, exactly seated at this dais, are seated at this dais today. Ms. Schrefer, I would just want to say that both Mr. Schombach and Ms. Tor have been just outstanding representatives for our district. Ms. Tor has regularly brought critical information to us, information we wouldn't otherwise have, which we're always seeking. And the opportunity to hear from our students isn't always easy to come by and always much, much appreciated and, and something that we place high value on. We're always pleased to have students in the audience who might address us this evening. I see a couple of you out there as well as the presence of our student board member and our, and our other student board member, alternate student board member. It's not just here at the board meetings where we converse and seek their guidance. Robert talked about learning from us. However, we learn from Robert and we have that opportunity all year long to learn from our student board members. That is definitely a two way street. It is not just about you, us contributing to you or your learning, but also the great gifts that you bring us and the wisdom and the energy you bring from your peers to the decisions that this board makes, which we take exceedingly seriously. So thank you both so much for that.
Well said, Trustee Patterson. Thank you very much. Like, Trustee Horner? Oh, Trustee Elman, I'm sorry. Vice President Altman.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to work with our student trustees on the resolution regarding United Against Hate and just their thought process, what they've learned, how they apply their knowledge and really good writing skills. Just a pleasure and I was so impressed working with you two. Our future's in good hands. Thank you.
Well said. Well said. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you, trustees, for those comments. Yes. And now we'll move on to Superintendent Staff Report. Sorry about that.
Thank you so much, President Escoto. I would like to hand this off to Assistant Superintendent Sanchez, who will be making a couple of announcements, administrator, principal administrator announcements. Go ahead.
Board, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I'd like to first introduce the first finalist and candidate for recommendation of principal that you'll be voting on later this evening for the Los Paseos Elementary. I'd like to ask Stormy Sutton to join me at the podium. Ms. Sutton holds a bachelor's degree in liberal studies and a master's in special education, entering the defense of her doctorate in social justice, leadership, and education, and has been the assistant principal of Los Paseos. So let you say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, everyone here tonight, so much. I am so honored and privileged to be speaking to you today as the potential appointment for the Los Paseos Elementary School as principal. This is a community that I love so deeply. I always say it's Morgan Hill's best kept secret. We're a lovely pocket of joy. So to continue the great work and serve our incredibly brilliant teachers, our bright and passionate students, and this leadership capacity is truly my greatest honor. And I'm so privileged and excited to keep doing great work next year. Thank you so much.
Our next recommendation that'll be voted on later by the board is for the Walsh Principalship. I'd like to invite Mr. Juan Carlos Cuevas to join me at the podium. Mr. Cuevas holds a bachelor's degree in sociology with a minor in education from UCLA and a master's degree from San Jose State University in educational leadership. He's been serving as the assistant principal of Britton and Murphy Middle Schools. I guess he's done a few different things. So we're glad you're here and we'll give you a few moments to say.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I truly am also privileged to be here and congratulations to Dr. Carmen Garcia on her announcement today in regards to your recognition. I'm, I'm beyond excited to potentially come back to PA Wash and be appointed as the principal. I had the privilege of working summer school principal a couple of years back at PA Wash. I've also had the privilege of working at Britton as an assistant principal for a year before going over to Murphy the past two years. Overall, just in general, the, the support that I received from all of the community, the parents, the students, the teachers over my years here in Morgan Hill has, is, is truly what keeps me here, right? I was sharing with the board earlier on. I had a parent today who was, because technically I would be promoting at, at Murphy, they gave me a lay as well saying, Mr. Cuevas, because I would be promoting. So truly have just been amazingly received by the parents that I have seen and, and have communicated with me over the past couple of parent events. So I look forward to continuing to work on the work that's been built and listening to the community because I truly do also believe that there's a lot of work to be done. So thank you for the parents that have spoken here on, on behalf of Wash.
Thank you. Thank you so much and congratulations to both. I'd like to announce that June is Pride Month and so join me in the celebration of Pride Month, as June as Pride Month. I want to also highlight a little bit about a recent conversation I had with Tiffany. Tiffany is to my right with the most gorgeous smile. She's a parent at Barrett and she developed from a grassroots level SDC motivators, special day class motivators. Her, and it was, it came from her need to connect with other parents whose kids also were considered SDC or had an IEP. And so she established meetings, initially coffees away from campus with the students and ultimately moved from the coffee conversations, it moved to bowling with the parents and also with the students, going to the movies with the parents and the students. And so we had a lovely meeting recently to, to bring this idea to the other campuses in our district, elementary, middle, and high school. So more to come, but I wanted to take a moment to highlight this exceptional idea. So how do we, how do we provide organic? exceptional idea. So how do we provide organic, informal check-ins with our parents and our students based on their level of need? And so I really want to highlight Tiffany and her great work. I also want to recognize Cecilia Ponzini and the Edward Boss Prado Foundation. She is in front or next to a washer and dryer that her foundation donated to Britton Middle School. This was at the request of the principal at Britton. And so, so thank you so much, Cecilia Ponzini, for everything that you do for our students. And essentially, it's a washer and dryer to meet needs, to wash the, perhaps the lost and found clothing on campus, perhaps it's to help a family, you know, who is in need. So thank you so much for that, and we're hoping to replicate these efforts throughout our school district. She has ideas for other campuses. I just won't give it away. But it is, I think it meets a perfect definition of a basic need, and we meet parents at their level of need, and I'm proud that as a school district, we model that. We meet parents at their level of need. Also want to hi, thank you. Also, we'd like to highlight the wonderful Britton ribbon cutting that occurred yesterday, and it's years in the making, literally actually from back in 2012, when the electorate in Morgan Hill, San Martín, and South San Jose voted yes on Measure G, and because of that, Britton campus has been completely transformed. I heard yesterday during the ribbon cutting, somebody said that now it's a landmark for our city. I also see it as symbolic welcoming into downtown Morgan Hill, and it's sort of like a goodbye away from downtown Morgan Hill. So thank you so much to all the voters who helped us with Measure G, and as well as staff and architects and the construction Flint. San Martín Guin, El Toro, you're right, San Martín Guin, El Toro, Los Paseos, and Walsh, Jesus Christ. It's the first book. I was there for most of it, Trustee Knutson, you were there as well, and I missed the announcement of the big winner. So congratulations to Los Paseos. They actually read 36 books and were asked very detailed questions about the books and the authors. My gosh, I was blown away by how excited the students were to share their knowledge of the books. I don't know about you, but do you remember all 36 books you might have read on the spot? Also, thank you. I know we have a couple of members of the Kiwanis here on the dais. I want to thank the Kiwanis in Morgan Hill and also all the Kiwanis members in our city of Morgan Hill for year after year after year recognition of our students with financial incentives through very nice, very handsome scholarships, and they're called the Turnaround Scholarships. And so it was my pleasure to represent the district and to congratulate our students. Thank you again, Kiwanis, for your turnaround scholarships. Also, just this morning, the students at Paradise Valley, all of the students at Paradise Valley, fun, yes, please, please, please. This is actually a beautiful, a beautiful story, a beautiful highlight. The students at Paradise Valley. They were tied between about 30 cents, I believe. So the students, the students at Paradise Valley fundraised almost $4,000 by donating coins. Dollar bills were not allowed unless they sabotaged each other. I won't share the details, but anyway, it was almost $4,000, and it was wonderful to see Mr. Lissisero there. The Magical Bridge is really yours and Shirley's brainchild. And so thanks to you, our students are seeing the vision, and they are donating not just their money, but also their effort and their love toward Magical Bridge. So thank you so much for bringing Magical Bridge to Morgan Hill, and thank you to our Paradise Valley students. Also had a happy retirement. We had a lovely retirement celebration. I'll go a little faster. I'm sorry, I'm a little long today. Congratulations to all of our Sobrato students for their senior awards. Congratulations to our 197 students who are now fluent English proficient. That is amazing. Congratulations to all of the beautiful student speakers. It was absolutely empowering to see all of our families come out in support of our students, and thank you, teachers, for helping our students. I also, I'll just lift this up a little bit. We so believe as a school system and student voice and student agency that we continue to go to our students in a very informal, you know, focus group sessions of sorts, among other data gathering opportunities. Most recently, at the Britton Focus Group, I had the privilege of sitting in on a couple of groups, and the theme that was common across these groups is the importance of trusted adults, and I need to highlight a couple, a couple of trusted adults at Britton. So Steve, he is a campus supervisor at Britton. Oh, my gosh, his name, you should have seen the students' faces. They lit up when they mentioned Steve and what he did for them, and also AP Gallegos, he is new to our school system. This is his first year, and the students connect with him, and it's absolutely lovely to continue to provide those trusted adults for our students. Every single student needs to have a trusted adult. And lastly, if you have not seen the Morgan Hill Times, please pick it up. We have highlighted all 611 graduates from Live Oak, Sobrato, and Central. We've also prominently displayed our valedictorians and salutatorians, and, you know, it takes a village, and I'm very proud of our entire community, ensuring that our, and we have some seniors here as well. Can you just wave your hands like, yeah, there. And if I can just echo Trustee Altman's comments, our future is in great hands. So congratulations. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Garcia. We'll now move on to 1.3, reports from our employee groups. First up is the Morgan Hill Classified Employee Association President Cheryl Van Deventer. You'll get it.
Sorry. I know it's a tough one. Blame my husband. Good evening, President Escoto, trustees, superintendent, assistant superintendents, student board member, colleagues, and guests. My name is Cheryl Van Deventer, and I'm honored to be the president of Morgan Hill Classified Employees Association. Congratulations to Dr. Garcia for your award. That's very, very wonderful. As a representative of MHCEA, I represent the classified employees of Los Paseos and PA Walsh. When I say thank you to Debbie Stewart and Shannon Raffat for their leadership, guidance, and direction, we wish you the greatest success in your new journey, and we know that you will be amazing wherever you go. Congratulations to Stormy Sutton and Juan Carlos Cuevas, hope I said that right, as you step into your new roles as the principals of Los Paseos and PA Walsh respectively. I look forward as the president of MHCEA to working with you as we come together to support your classified employees as they support your students. Last week, MHCEA held elections for all of our executive offices and site representatives. I'm happy to announce that Luz Andrade was reelected as secretary, Tara Guilford was elected as our treasurer, Elisa Garcia was elected as the vice president, and I was reelected as the president. We currently have 18 site representative positions, and 15 of those positions were filled. These are two-year terms, and we all look forward to working together to serve the students and the MHUSD community, and that's all I have for you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is the president of the Morgan Hill Federation of Teachers, Jim Levis.
Good evening, President Escoto, trustees, superintendent Garcia, staff, and guests. I am Jim Levis, the proud president of the Morgan Hill Federation of Teachers, and I also wanted to do some recognitions from earlier. First of all, to a student board member, Jasreen Tour, and alternate Robert Schombach. I wanted to thank you guys for your wonderful participation and input as members of the board this school year, and you should be incredibly proud of all your hard work, and we certainly look forward to your continued success. I also wanted to congratulate all the graduating seniors and wish them the best of luck as they take the next step into their lives. You had shown the information in the newspaper. I also wanted to comment that this weekend, the Morgan Hill Rotary Club put up the banners downtown of all the graduating seniors. Of course, this was started during COVID by Mr. Mario Benuelos. It was his idea, and so we are honored to, also as a member of Rotary, we are honored to put those banners up. We also had the assistance of the Kiwanis Club, and so we thank you guys for that. I also wanted to congratulate, hopefully, potentially congratulate, Stormy and Juan Carlos for their potential appointments later tonight as principals at Los Paseos and PA Walsh. So I also look forward to working with you moving forward, and I had the honor to work with Juan Cuevas when he was at Britton. I'd like to start off this evening with a little bit of work from MHFT members as we finish up the year. San Martín Guin's students have been incredibly busy, as have all sites, but they participated in a theater production. They had a mobile dairy visit, complete with a cow, and Mrs. Campbell's third graders visited the Morgan Hill House, learned a little bit more about Morgan Hill history, and enjoyed some cookies and tea. And after studying and observing the life cycle, they also released a number of butterflies back into the wild. At Live Oak, sophomore Andon Rogers won the Mission Bell woodworking competition with his optical illusion cutting board. His first-place win earned him $1,000 and a personal tour of the Mission Bell facility here in town. This is the second year in a row that an Acorn woodworking student has won this competition, and you can see pictures on Instagram at lohs underscore CTE if you are interested. At Nordstrom, the fourth grade has been practicing a play called Gold Dust or Bust for Parents. This week will be performances for parents and in classrooms for students. They chose to have a gold rush play because it solidifies their learning about the history and population of California. And Jackson Academy of Math and Music had a year-long campaign to encourage reading. I'm pretty sure this is consistent throughout the district. Their students made bookmarks to keep their way along as they read, and the site read more than 40,000 books this year. Now, they can also get their reading glam shot. They have built butterfly wings out of all of the student bookmarks, and so students are encouraged to get their pictures in front of that. This school year ends in two days, on Thursday, for students and staff. We, of course, need to remember that many classified employees will be working throughout the summer to keep our facilities looking good, as well as preparing them for summer school and next year. For many, the end of this school year is a sign of relief for parents, often a busy time to secure childcare and summer activities. But generally, we head into summer with excitement and the promise of a new school year in August. Unfortunately, this excitement is also juxtaposed with the concern of a budget crisis that our district will look, and what our district will look like after all the coming budget cuts. The district is cutting expenses for next year by $5.5 million, an additional $5.5 million in '25-'26, and potentially another $10 million in '26-'27. Many of these cuts mean cuts of teachers and supports for students. On a March 12 update, the superintendent addressed the budget problem by stating that there would be budget reduction and staffing adjustments. Of course, staffing adjustments means job eliminations. She stated that in addition to the ending of the one-time COVID-related monies from the state and federal governments, our state economy has retracted, resulting in significant loss of projected funds to our district for the '24-'25 school year. I don't believe that this statement is entirely accurate. The only reduction in anticipated revenues was the reduction in the COLA from the anticipated 3.5% to the actual 1.07 rate. While an approximate 2.5% lower COLA does represent a loss of 2.5 to $3 million in revenue, it accounts for only a fraction of the $28 million in the projected unrestricted deficit spending over the next three years. This deficit spending is so concerning, the county superintendent of schools referenced it in certification letters in both January and April of this year. These letters sent to the board president corresponded to the first and second interim budget reports submitted to the county. These letters, while providing a positive certification, also stated that she had serious concerns in January and continued concerns in April for the long-term fiscal health of the district, while acknowledging that the district has made significant budget reductions and continues to plan for reductions in '25-'26. She stated, "I would like to remind the district that continued deficit spending is not sustainable and will lead to fiscal insolvency if ongoing expenditures are not brought into alignment with projected revenues." The county superintendent then directs the board president that, in addition to the adopted budget, the district must submit a board-approved detailed plan to show how the district plans to bring ongoing expenditures into alignment with ongoing revenues. These letters are certainly a concern and incredibly important for all board members to be aware of as they work to fix this budget crisis. Now, on May 1 of this year, just a month ago, I participated in a budget update with members of the board and representatives from all three labor groups. At this meeting, these certification levers, letters were brought up. The two board members that were present were not aware of these letters and had never seen them before. These letters were sent to trustee president Escoto on January 12 and April 12, respectively. These letters are supposed to be shared with all board members, but at least two of them were not aware that they had ever been sent or received. I continue to go back to the term transparency. Where is the transparency? Is it transparent not to share these concerns of the superintendent with all the board members? I don't think so. As we look towards next school year, let's consider Board Policy 3100, Budget. One of the items calls for budgetary advisory committee. It states that the superintendent or designee may appoint a budget advisory committee composed of staff, board representatives, and/or members of the community. The committee shall develop recommendations during the budget development process, and its duty shall be assigned each year based on district needs. All recommendations of the committee shall be advisory only and shall not be binding to the board. Trustee Altman referenced this committee at a previous board meeting and was told that it could not be organized until fall, since it would take some time to secure members of the community to join the committee. I want to remind the board that with the current fiscal mess we're in, advice from staff and community members is paramount. Maybe if this committee had been active, we might not be in as severe a fiscal crisis as we are. I want to request that the selection of any community members for this advisory committee represent a cross-section of the community and be discussed and made at a public meeting and not behind closed doors. Last Friday, trustees participated in a board retreat at the Face Center. The one main item on the agenda was the superintendent's evaluation. Approximately 15 community members spoke prior to the closed session. Unfortunately, the meeting was not on Zoom, so community members that had to work and could not attend, or were just unable to attend the retreat, were unable to make comments. They were also unable to hear the public comments and then hear the report out of closed session by the trustees. I ask that all retreats, like all board meetings, be available on Zoom for optimal public participation and transparency. Last year, the board also had a retreat where they formalized the superintendent's evaluation, but they never reported out the results at a future regular board meeting. I believe that this information is important and wish to inform the public of the vote. Board trustees voted for a satisfactory evaluation of the superintendent, Escoto, Horner, Patterson, and Rosales Montez. Three board members voted for an unsatisfactory evaluation for the superintendent, Altman, Eves, Knutson, and Gardner. Unfortunately, the public has never been informed of the criteria that the board is using to evaluate the superintendent. This makes it almost impossible for anyone to know what is expected of the superintendent and how to evaluate her moving forward. This is a problem. Board Policy 2140, Evaluation of the Superintendent, states, "At the open session after the superintendent's evaluation or at a subsequent meeting, the board and superintendent shall jointly identify performance goals for the next year. Since I see nothing on the agenda for tonight's meeting, I look forward to the board following their policy and providing the public with the performance goals for next year." Transparency. In closing, I would like to wish everyone a wonderful and safe summer, wherever your plans may lead you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Now we'll have reports from the board members. Anyone? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Patrick, are you there? We have, we have the Morgan Hill Educational Leaders Association President, Patrick Bookser.
Good evening, everybody.
I can hear you, Patrick. I apologize. I almost forgot about you.
No, that's okay. I thought I was off the hook tonight, but thank you for recognizing. First of all, from Mahala, wrapping up the end of the year, principals are working hard on their SIPs, finishing them up. We finished state and benchmark testing for our school district. We're getting all prepared for the promotions and ceremonies, graduations. We're getting all prepared for the promotions and ceremonies, graduations. Terry will make connections to this. And former principals as well, too, sitting on the board, collecting all the Chromebooks, collecting all the textbooks, collecting all chargers, all the library books, a lot of collecting, counting, organizing, and forming parents to bring it back so we have it for the following year. A special thank you to our maintenance departments for helping to set up for all the promotions and ceremonies that are coming up. Like to acknowledge both Debbie and Shannon on their new adventures and thank them for all their years of support and service in our school district. Fingers crossed. Congratulations to Stormy and Juan Carlos. Looking forward to hopefully working close side by side in your principalships. We'd like to also recognize our retirees for all their years of dedication. Had a wonderful ceremony for our retirees. And just always a beautiful event. And a special thank you to the committee who put on such a wonderful event for our retirees. Special thank you to all the students at our multilingual recognition ceremony, wonderful event at Live Oak. And finally, I would like to congratulate our seniors. Before we do that, a special thank you to the superintendent for your new award. That's a huge achievement and congratulations on receiving that award. And then finally, to our seniors, on May 13, 2020, we closed schools. Our seniors were in the eighth grade. And now they are ready to cross the stage at our high schools. And so I just want to give very special thank you to our seniors who worked through years of both virtual and hybrid and are now crossing the stage. Congratulations to all of our seniors for their hard work and dedication and perseverance. And that is it from Mahala.
Well said. Well said, Mr. Bookser. Thank you very much. All right, board members, it's our time to report out. Anyone want to kick us off? Trustee Horner.
Thank you, President Escoto and colleagues. I know we've all been quite busy these last few weeks. I'll try and summarize some of the things I've had the joy of participating in. Dr. Garcia mentioned the Kiwanis Turnaround Scholarship. Participated in that as a Kiwanian for many years, long before he even thought of running for the school board. But one of the really special and unique things about that scholarship program is it's targeted at students that have had some difficult challenge, personal, family, educational, whatever, have overcome it and are moving on. And so this scholarship is not only an upfront scholarship, but is renewable every semester, all the way through bachelor. So it's a wonderful program. And thanks to the great support of the community, 15 new students, all from Morgan Hill Unified, were welcomed into that program. So it's not just, you know, here's your check tonight, but hopefully we'll see all of them over the next four years. So that's really, really extraordinary. Another extraordinary thing that Dr. Garcia mentioned. I was lucky to start my day with Mr. Listero and then see him again this evening. The magical bridge really is magical, and he speaks so eloquently about how this is what gives real meaning to his life. And I hear you, and I appreciate you, and I know our community does. And hats off to the Paradise Valley kids for just blowing it out of the water with coins, with $3,940. I also, you know, there's this paper dollar thing, maybe $400 or $500 that came in a paper. But the vast majority was coins. And I understand the staff's fingers are still a little tired from rolling all those points. That's a lot of rolling. Well done. Also was really excited to join a number of you at the Britton ribbon cutting. It's been a long time coming. What a marquee school for our community. I remember, again, I wasn't on the board when that project began. I know there was a lot of community criticism about why are you spending so much money there? Much like we hear now, but on different things. No, no, why there? Why not mine? But, you know, now that we see the result, and that was one of our oldest and tiredest campuses. And I hope at some point we get to where the community understands the needs of our schools and supports another bond. It doesn't look like that's likely to be this year. Sad about that, but that is the situation it is because we have many other sites that have comparable levels of need. So while it's exciting to celebrate what's been done, there's more to be done. Also, was able to be at the Resource Fair at the Family and Community Engagement Center. Man, that place was packed once again. Just incredible to see so many families getting resources, information as they prepare for what's going to go on this summer. Just a real joy to be out there. It's also, it's activities time of year, as I'm sure everybody in here is well aware of. A couple of highlights, the things I got, I got to see, I go to, what I can, but it's not everything. But the Sobrato and Murphy concert and choir performances were really amazing. It was really exciting for me personally, particularly to see all the music being performed and to see some of our high school choirs in action now that that is back. That was wonderful. So got to visit the Live Oak Robotics. If you don't know what's going on with robotics over at Live Oak, wow! You know, I had last visited when that club first started, when some students moved up from Britton and wanted to have it. It's all student-led. The leadership are, I mean, the young women that are students that are leading that club are extraordinary. You know, they're going to two competitions a year, raising $40,000, putting on a summer, you know, special camp for elementary school kids. I mean, wow, that is just so, one of the many really impressive things happening in that, you know, please, you make a plan to go see that. It's amazing. Then that evening, a more amazing at Live Oak was the dance and drama presentations. Again, blew my socks off, just so proud of what, so much of the work going on there. Also had a chance to participate as a volunteer at the Revive Mushroom Festival. Like X in Twitter, it's formerly known as Mushroom Mardi Gras, now the Mushroom Festival. And a lot of people wondered, well, you know, I'm not involved in, I was just there as a volunteer, taking people's money and giving it to somebody else. Not involved in organizing it, but having organized a lot of events of that scale. I know how difficult it is. And now with the requirement for fencing and security and the costs involved, really all aftermaths of the Gilregar festival disaster some time ago. But that team did a great job. They had over 6,500 ticketed entries the first day, over 5,000 the second day. So a great turnout and a lot of fun. And I know all that money, after they pay all those big bills, what's left goes into scholarships in support of our students. So just, you know, hats off to that, an extraordinary effort. Sorry. The Legislative Action Committee, we're still active. We had our most recent meeting with Assemblymember Evan Low, who also happens to be running for the U.S. House. Very interesting conversation. Not about homelessness and mental health and food insecurity and all the issues that are affecting so many of our students at, you know, the base levels of Maslow's hierarchy of needs and how, you know, school systems are not designed to provide that level of support explicitly. We're doing a lot here with our care team and other efforts, but, you know, continuing to do that, to do what needs to be done for our students and families. And, you know, my colleagues throughout the county were sharing very similar stories. And he was quite, you know, his response was, wow, you know, we need to figure out how to do more to support the people of our community that need support. So it was interesting, and having had many conversations like that, you know, it's usually about the budget and this bill and that bill. But this conversation became kind of more contextual and was quite meaningful. And I will close with, just a reminder, I mentioned this in the last meeting, but the new Morgan Hill Education Foundation, you know, has raised $30,000 to get a little more than 30, but 30 to be granted here in the fall. So, you know, please, people involved in any of our schools, this is only for Morgan Hill Unified District programs, and the intention is to support various kinds of enrichment and particularly looking to, you know, lower financial barriers to participation. So whatever that may be, you know, all the various aspects. So we're finalizing, you know, what the grant application process will be and how that will be done. You know, the selections will be led by people that are not directly affiliated with the district. So there's no look of favor to it. I mentioned the Kiwanis thing, you know, trustee Escoto and I happen to be in Kiwanis, but we're not on the scholarship committee, you know, just doesn't look like. We don't want any appearance of playing favorites, but that is, that is coming. And I want to thank the Edward Ross Prado Foundation and Kiwanis for putting in that initial $30,000 because they believe in what we're doing in these programs. So be looking for an application. The deadline will be in August for distribution in September to provide a little more support for some of these great programs for our kids. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, trustee Horner. Yes, there you go. You got an applause. Anyone else? More members? Trustee Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, staff, public. Thank you and congratulations, Dr. Garcia, on your award from the California Association of Latino Superintendents, CALSA. Much applauded and much deserved, 100. I think it was one out of 100. So huge kudos to you and congratulations. Congratulations to Cheryl Vandevaner and your reelection to the Masiya presidency. I look forward to working with you. And Masiya also is in good hands, as is the future of our country with the seniors that were graduating this year. Dr. Garcia, thank you so much for talking about the trusted adults on the Britton campus. You're listening to students once again, as is so incredibly important and hasn't been done so much in the past, or at least not done well in this district. I really appreciate that. You mentioned the campus supervisor, Steve, and had a picture of him. When students are reiterating one adult's name, we need to be able to treat those people well and make sure that they are well cared for as staff so that they can continue interacting, lifting up our students, listening to them and advocating for them. We have a few teachers in the audience. It's always a pleasure to have you all here. And all of you are also and all staff advocates for our students and listeners and champions. Trusted adults on campus, Avery Antreiner is here, and Ingar Wang. Looking forward to hearing from you and your presentation with your students. I know you well to be those trusted adults on our campuses that students go to, that they feel listened to. And I'm looking forward to your presentation very much. Thank you, Tina Quinnes. Thank you for speaking. Another one of those trusted adults on campus. Thank you for your service, as well as the other administrators, district staff, and teachers, and classified staff in the audience, principals, et cetera, assistant principals. Thank you all so much. Being that trusted adult is incredibly important. I was able to speak with some of the Los Paseos families. I'm proud and longtime resident of South San Jose and a proud member of the Morgan Hill Unified School District Board of Trustees and exceptionally happy to be a San Jose resident and exceptionally happy to be in the Los Paseos neighborhood where I live and have lived for 20 years. That means that I encounter all kinds of Los Paseos families regularly, as well as some Murphy families, Sobrato families in the grocery store, at the gas station, and at Starbucks on a regular basis. What I have heard recently, in recent months, since Principal Stewart announced her resignation, was great concern about getting a new principal, a great desire for speed in naming that principal, and almost unanimous desire to have Stormy Sutton appointed principal. I want to thank Dr. Garcia for the inclusive process that you instilled. I heard immediately from the Home and School Coopios after she was invited to participate in the selection process of the Los Paseos principal, how happy she was to be included, how meaningful it was to her. And she didn't know the result yet when she contacted me, but she was very pleased with the process. So once again, superintendent, although I've read some interesting commentary from the public about the lack of inclusion and the speed at which the appointments were made, I just want to say that in the community members that I heard were very pleased with the inclusive process and were extremely, extremely relieved with the speed at which you made that appointment because no one wanted to enter the summer that I heard from and arrive on October 14 without a principal. So thank you so much, Dr. Garcia, for the speed of that appointment. I had the privilege of attending the Children's Agenda Annual Summit, Children's Summit, Santa Clara Countywide. All kinds of partners, including elected officials from county level and higher, and others of us were there. Department heads from all kinds of county departments, all kinds of school representatives come together every year to measure the results of how children are doing in Santa Clara County. I've been a longtime member of this group and paid careful attention to how students in Santa Clara County are doing. And they came out again with their kids' children's data book for Santa Clara County, similar to what Morgan Hill Unified is experiencing. Some of the indicators are looking good. Some of the indicators are peskily stagnant. But it's wonderful to see the whole county come together on behalf of kids. At that event every year, there's an award given to a large movement in the county that serves a lot of kids, where leaders come together to make things happen on behalf of kids in an approach called collective impact. And this year, the Santa Clara County Children's Agenda people decided that they would honor all the work that's been done with wellness centers on hundreds of campuses in Santa Clara County. And so it was my honor and privilege to be present in the audience when Morgan Hill Unified was awarded one of the Bold Steps for Children Award 2024 for the establishment of wellness centers on many of our campuses, along with at least more than a dozen other districts in the county. So I'm going to leave this with Dr. Garcia, but the kudos go to many of the people in the front row today, as well as Dr. Jimenez and our folks over here, and as well as staff. So congratulations to our staff. The Sobrato FFA, used to be the Future Farmers of America, but I think today it has a greater meaning, put on their second annual car show. Huge number of cars entered, a ton of money was made. The students ran everything under the careful leadership of another trusted campus adult, which is Kayla Paglia, who runs FFA on the Sobrato High School campus and is much loved by her students. The car show was a huge success, and it's remarkable walking around, talking to attendees who are not people who are all, who are usually local residents, but not always attached to the schools, and having them understand how much progress has been made in providing our high school students, our secondary students with all kinds of opportunities. In FFA, there were the Floral students, as many of you know, is one of our CTE or Career and Technical Education Pathways. The Floral students were there selling their stuff. The welding students had created the beautiful prizes for the car show winners. And then, of course, the FFA students were all there, running the car show, selling things, running raffles, taking total control in their fine leadership capacities. And I was able to inform a lot of our Morgan Hill residents about the many, many things that are happening at the secondary level in our district to get kids career and employment ready. So many people, especially those a little bit further out in years, don't know that we've got welding, we've got construction tech. We now have a pathway for certified trainer and fitness. We've got pathways in floral, we've got all kinds of pathways. So they're always happy to hear because when I went to school, we had welding and construction, and that's all gone now. And then it's joyfully announced by myself and others that it's all back and it's doing well. Thank you so much. I think both Ms. Diaz and Ms. Sager in the audience, if I'm not mistaken, thank you for your leadership in those areas. And then lastly, for my report, I want to say that, I think Mr. Levis mentioned that we had a retreat on Friday. Thank you, colleagues, for scheduling the retreat on a day that I could make it as a full-time employee with many, many responsibilities to family on the weekends. Friday was the only day that I could do it. So thank you so much for considering the needs of the trustees and the staff in scheduling the retreat at a time when I could attend. I appreciate that. Friday, we had a retreat, and it was a good time for colleagues to come together and make decisions. Something happened at that retreat that was extremely disturbing to me. There was a public commenter who spoke on a subject regarding our superintendent where she inserted an idea that maybe she beats her children. This was an absolute quote from a public commenter at Friday's retreat. Well, what I believe to be true about that is, A, if this person inserted that into her comments as a joke, it was insensitive, insufferable, and ignorant. If this person inserted that comment with any degree of seriousness, it was offensive, it was intolerable, and it was completely out of place. As a person who works with foster youth on a daily basis in my job, I found it incredibly offensive to make a fleeting comment like that when there are children removed from their families every day due to actual abuse, neglect, and abandonment. So, colleagues, Mr. President and Ms. Vice President, I'm hoping that in the future, if any such language transpires in this boardroom, that immediate action would be taken. immediate action would be taken to silence the speaker and to make such kind of comments absolutely intolerable in this boardroom. It was offensive, was ignorant, and I just couldn't bear to hear such things again in this boardroom. That ends my public, that ends my board report.
Thank you, Trustee Patterson. And I think I can say for both myself and Vice President Altman, that you have our commitment, that we will certainly do so in the event that someone unfortunately makes similar comments. For, is there anyone else that would like to make a board report? Okay.
I, may I say something?
Yes.
To that end, I want to highlight one of the previous speakers who absolutely said abhorrent things as well. And I want to apologize on his behalf to all of our community. That hateful language will certainly not be tolerated by me or by this board, and we are absolutely upstanders for all of our students. So I apologize because you've heard that. So let us continue to come together so that our students thrive.
All right. If there are no other reports from board members, then I'm going to move on to 1.5 upcoming events. Upcoming events are attached to your agenda for your review. We'll move now to J, consent items. We'll move to approve tonight's consent items. Are there any trustees who would like to pull an item for further discussion?
President Escoto, I'd like to pull J1A, please.
J18?
Eight.
Eight, sorry. There we go. All right. Anyone else? All right. So do I have a motion to pull J? Oh, I saw that.
President Escoto?
Yes, sir.
I have, I motioned to approve the consent calendar with the exception of J1A.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Knutson. All those in favor say, oh, excuse me, our student board member. Thank you. Colleagues, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right. So we're going to move that now. But we just pulled. We can go right into that, right? All right. Okay. Vice President?
Thank you. I would just like to add on to J1A that board will be notified of these transfers at the following budget reports specifically. So we would be notified of specific fund transfers the next time we have an interim board report, end of year board report, beginning board budget reports.
Hi, thank you. I just want to point out that this isn't specific to like budget transfers between fund sources, like Fund 01, Fund 17, Fund 20, things like that. This is a standard resolution that we do that allows us to continue the process of closing the books while we are at recess during summer because our fiscal department is still working, we're closing up the fiscal year. So this is all kinds of budget transfers between any accounts that goes through the closing process. If we were supposed to pay a bill out of here and we decide to pay it over here. So all of those transfers would be excessive for you to see every single one. So I just want to clarify maybe what particular information you might, because this is all the ins and outs that happens with the closing.
Okay, that makes some sense. I'm concerned when the funds we have that are reserve funds are being tapped into.
Absolutely.
So is there some way I could say that with?
Yes, that if there are transfers between funds out of the special reserves, we can certainly give you those particular documentation.
That works for me.
Sounds good.
So seeing no other comment, I would like to make a motion to approve J1A with the addendum provided by Assistant Superintendent Penny Tembo.
I'll second that.
Second that, great. Thank you, Trustee Montes and Vice President Altman. So we've got a motion and a second. Student board member. Colleagues, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, now we're moving to general business. And we're going to begin with, it's K1, yeah, K1 Ethnic Studies Presentation. We'll have Assistant Superintendent Jimenez and staff will present the Ethnic Studies presentation. Oops, sorry. Dr. Jimenez, Dr. Jimenez, there is public comment that I need to go to. Everyone, every I kind of jumped the gun there, so to speak. We need to have public comment, and we do have some folks that are speaking to this. And the first speaker is Rachel Schaefer. Rachel, are you here or are you on Zoom?
She's on Zoom.
She's on Zoom. Rachel, can you hear us?
I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Rachel. You're on.
Okay, so I just prepared a little something that's easier for me. Good evening, school board, parents, students. My name is Rachel Schaefer, as you just heard, and I'd like to give a brief comment on the Ethnic Studies Pilot Program. Dr. Garcia asked me in private, in a private meeting, why I care so much about the Ethnic Studies Program. And I'd like to share the reason with all of you tonight. I care because I come from a rich, multi-ethnic background that I share with my children who are students in the district. I care deeply about how they are instructed about their ethnic heritage. Excuse me. And I do not believe that anyone has the right to make them feel more or less than who they are, each an amazing creation. Lastly, I care because this is going to be a required course for all high schoolers, beginning with the 25-26 academic year. I'd like to point out that on Slide 6 of the presentation to follow, the district has spelled out that the curriculum being used does not adhere to the liberated or constructive model. I would like to clarify for the board and the public that our district has been using materials that are considered liberated in philosophy. An important clarification. Under Unit 6 of the course description, a resource listed is the Building Equitable Learning Environments, Organizing Principles, and Liberatory Design Quick Facts Sheet, which states in Point 1, "They seek to transform power, relocate power where stakeholders are in charge of their own destiny." In a school, this looks like students taking part in, in a, this looks like students taking part. Uh-oh, sorry, I'm getting feedback. Point 6 was by any means necessary. We must be willing to give up anything that is restricted. Yes.
Just for a second, colleagues, if your mics are on, please turn them off. We've discovered that that contributes to some feedback.
Okay, sorry.
All right. No, it didn't. No, sorry at all. It's on our end that we needed to turn off our mics. So Rachel, please continue.
Okay, Point 6 was by any means necessary. It stated that we must be willing to give up anything that is restricting us from moving forward in our work. This includes power, inequitable structures, and any methods of organizing we may be tied to, which are directly linked to liberated philosophy. Sorry, I'm getting feedback on my side. You have heard several times now that the board passed the curriculum on June 6, 2023, with the stipulation that parents be added to the development of the curriculum. Once again, I would like to share that Ms. Untreiner, sorry if I said that wrong, approached me and another parent who spoke that night to join their task force. The district never followed up with us, and the first meeting that I had with the district office was in February of 2024. In the meantime, all coursework had been developed and parent feedback had been obtained. Although Ms. Untreiner responded to the parents, the district did not. When the district, can I have one more minute since I was cut off? When the district office and Superintendent Garcia were asked why they had been ignoring emails, phone calls, and personal visits to the office, Superintendent Garcia firmly denied any parent task force requirement or stipulation was ever passed. In fact, the records show that stipulation was redacted from the records. When Morgan Hill parents asked for the video footage of the now infamous June 6 school board meeting, parents were told the footage had been deleted. Thankfully, a community member recorded the school board meeting and has the footage of the measure passed.
All right. Anybody else?
Yes.
We have, okay. Sarah Laws is our next speaker. By the way, when we had the glitch, the timer was paused. So now we have Sarah Laws. Is she on? Sarah, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Sarah. Please, you can address the board now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'm kind of coming in and I have pretty much the same concerns as Rachel. I'm here with you guys tonight, speaking on Zoom instead of being with my family, because I think it's really important that the families and the parents of Morgan Hill Unified know about our concerns regarding the Ethnic Studies class currently being piloted at Sabrato in Live Oak. As Rachel said, the June 6 board meeting, the trustees voted to pass the pilot Ethnic Studies Program as an elective class, and there was a stipulation that there was a parent task force to be created to be part of the development, the, and the, the creating of the curriculum. That parent task force was never created. And we addressed it with the district, and we were told that that did never happen, but we have video of that stipulation being passed. So it's really concerning that there's this lack of transparency that is being met with a ton of pushback from the district when, as parents, all we're trying to do is create a curriculum that is going to be inclusive, that is going to be constructive. And we're hoping to work with the teachers and the administrators to create this, but we're getting a lot of pushback. And like Rachel said, currently, the curriculum being used has some of those liberated model philosophies. And it's very clear, we've seen some of the books that are being used, and we were told that that wasn't going to happen. And the concern that we have with these liberated models is that other districts are being sued. We're already having financial problems. We do not need to be met with a lawsuit. So we're asking that we have transparency moving forward, that we work with teachers and administrators and parents all together to make an Ethnic Studies curriculum that works for everyone that isn't going to land us in a lawsuit, that isn't going to be divisive, but that's going to be constructive and positive. Thank you. I know I didn't take up all the time. You guys can continue. Thank you. Can you hear me?
All right. That concludes public comment. We'll now move to the presentation. Assistant Superintendent Jimenez and staff will present the Ethnic Studies Presentation.
Good evening, trustees, staff, and members of the public that are joining us today. Today, we have the pleasure of bringing you an update on our elective of Ethnic Studies on end year presentation. You have, we jumped the gun a little bit. We're very excited to showcase how the year has gone. So I'm going to start us off with just a little introduction that we've seen in every one of our quarterly feedback meetings that we have for the parents of children who are attending, who are in this elective. So I'm not going to read you the whole thing, other than to say the district will be required to offer the course of Ethnic Studies as a requirement by the 25-26 school year. We followed the recommendation of the trustees that was given on June 6, 2020, which is to solicit feedback from the parents and students taking the elective course. Next slide, please. All right. So a little bit about the Ethnic Studies course. The, it is a course that invites opportunities for culturally diverse histories and heritage to highlight it and study it in a manner that can be transformative, inclusive, and affirming of all students. I think that's part of our presentation tonight. So you'll be hearing about, from students and families, and obviously from our two wonderful instructors as well. At its core, the field of Ethnic Studies is an interdisciplinary disciplinary study of race, ethnicity, indigeneity, and an emphasis on the experience of people of color in the United States. The next slide, please. So a little bit about what we address with our parents and our community is the advantages of an early rollout. As I stated in my introduction, it's not a requirement as a course until the 25-26 school year. So what are some of the advantages of having an elective this year and next year? And that is to gather feedback and information about the instructional program. For those parents who joined us during our quarterly meetings, we certainly had a lot of discussions about the instructional units, right, the strategies, essential questions, things that the teachers were very transparent, the things that they learned, things that they like to implement. They gave us update on all these wonderful things. It gives our educators the opportunity to attend professional development, right? We certainly are aware of other districts in California that have an Ethnic Studies pathway that's tied to dual language immersion, that's tied to a whole bunch of other pathways in their districts. So learning from other people is a really important component of how we get it right for students. It sets the runway, right? As somebody who was a longtime teacher, I will tell you, there are details we have to iron out. So it gives us the opportunity to do that, enables us to learn on a small scale, and then see what works and refines it. It's a good, it's a good way to be able to introduce students to a new course and solicit their feedback. With an eye on equity, it's also really good and important to start small and look at the ways that we can support our, all of our students, including our students with disabilities who are in the course, our students who are English learners, right? And glean from then what are the best supports that work in that course. And of course, as I just said, gathering feedback from families and students. A little bit, the next slide. I won't be reading you all of the details, but I think the team and I thought it was very important to highlight the enormous work that was done beginning in November 2021 to get us to the point to be able to roll out out of the showroom, of course, that elected this year. So the basic, the basic identification and the work for this course started in November 2021 with looking at that California State Board of Education adopted course and curriculum called the Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum. And so there was a lot of research, a lot of conversation, a task force that was created throughout 21, 2021 and 2023. That task force that consisted of students, teachers, administrators, counselors, and district office staff, they conducted extensive research and interviews. As someone who is, I can't say relatively new, but as someone whose first year, this is my first year at Morgan Hill, I was given all that information of all the development, and it is quite hefty, right? Everything from other curriculum models to feedback to all of those things that are, that are listed there, the sample curriculum from other places and existing courses, professional learning happening at the, in the state district wide, about the need to think about fiscal, right, responsibilities for the course as far as like the option of textbooks, et cetera. So I wanted to make sure that we highlighted that this work didn't happen in a vacuum, that lots of people in our district, administrator staff, students, and parents worked together to put the foundations for this course that was ultimately approved by the board. If you go to the next slide, I think we end by Yeah, ready to do this one? All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Will you introduce yourself?
I'm Ingar Wang. I'm the Ethnic Studies teacher at Live Oak.
And I'm Avery Untreiner. I'm the Ethnic Studies teacher at Sabrato.
So continuing what Dr. Jimenez was saying, in the fall of 2022 to the spring of 2023, we then, sorry, we then set to work building the course description so that we could present it to Secondary Curriculum Council and the board, as was stated before, we went through the Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum, as well as worked on looking at approved Ethnic Studies looking at approved ethnic studies courses on UC A to G doorways. There were some that were already up, and so we use those as well to help uh, guide our, the creation of our own course. Uh, we also looked at, again, our own research, uh, as well as gathering input from students at Sabato and Live Oak through the Bell Circle teams and the student voices groups. We then made the decision, as we looked through all of that information, to develop the ethnic studies course description using thematic unit topics, learning targets and standards, rather than focusing on certain groups, uh, simply because uh, we felt that there was not enough time in a year to look at all of those groups uh, fairly. And so it was easier to uh, house them within certain themes related to the course, which are the titles of all of our units. Afterwards, we determined which teachers and administrators would help to develop the curriculum. Uh, rather than adopting a published curriculum that was already out there, uh, and then. Oh. Do you want to? You said you wanted to talk about that? No, okay. Um. And then as we developed it, uh, we again were pulling sources from many different uh, courses rather than using any singular model that was out there. So, you know, yes, uh, there are perhaps certain philosophical alignments with liberated uh, the liberal model, but we are also, I mean, there are also philosophical alignments with the constructive model as well. And uh, simply because our philosophies lineup does not mean that we, you know, directly advocate for any method of thinking.
You can keep going.
Yeah. Next slide, please.
Okay, so uh, following up with that, um, in continuing through fall twenty twenty two and spring twenty twenty three, uh, we did a continued review of our potential texts and supplemental materials that we wanted to include in the course outline and continued to make feedback and revisions to that curriculum outline, which has been provided. Uh, many times it's that very, very long document that is available publicly, uh, including feedback from teachers, administrators, and students. And then last fall, we presented and proposed that multi-page curriculum to all of you on May second. Uh, and the materials as well as supplemental texts for the course were publicly available to district office, which is procedure for all newly proposed courses. Uh, we also held um, uniquely to this course, two publicized and open parent and community meetings on both May tenth and May twenty fourth, at which we reviewed the curriculum in detail and we allowed for parents and community members to ask and have their questions answered regarding the proposed curriculum in between when it was proposed at the board and when it was voted on. Uh, the curriculum was then uh, re-discussed and voted on at the June sixth board meeting, as we remember. And it was approved with, as we have discussed, the caveat that parents would be invited to participate in feedback meetings throughout the pilot year of the course. Uh, so we're going to say more on that in a little bit. Um, as well as that, both Mr. Wang and myself uh, attended professional development opportunities over the summer before this year started. And then we have jointly attended a professional development course um, in ethnic studies collaborative uh, learning throughout this school year as well.
Next slide, please. Okay. Yes.
Okay, so going back to what we were saying about the uh, quarterly feedback meetings. So we have held four separate feedback meetings in order to explicitly align with that directive from the board to include parent and student voices in the development of the curriculum. They were hosted on October twenty fifth in Mr. Wang's classroom, on December fifth in my classroom, back at Live Oak on February twenty seventh, and then back at Sabato on May fifteenth. Um, all of the parents who expressed interest in attending the uh, ethnic studies. I, it's been referred to as the task force, it's been referred to as feedback meetings, all parents who expressed interest in attending that for whom we had the contact information. I know there was one specific individual who we missed and that was a mistake, but um, multiple parents and community members were invited to attend each of those four meetings. Um, as well as every family member um, who had a student in both myself and Mr. Wang's classes, that's sixty eight students and them, as well as all of their families and parents were invited to attend those meetings. Um, and we had a lot of participation, which was really wonderful. And we also provided an update on how the course was going to the Secondary Curriculum Council on March eighteenth.
Next slide, please. Uh, so at these meetings, this was our general framework uh, for all of them. Uh, we began with norms. Uh, we understood that um, you know, in case these meetings got uh, contentious, that it was important to remind ourselves that we were there to evaluate the, uh, to report on the course, to discuss it, to gather feedback. Uh, and just to make sure that uh, students especially who are there didn't feel uncomfortable by any, you know, comments or behavior or anything like that. Uh, we went over the agenda, provided resources. So each time uh, we would uh, give out papers that included things like uh, the unit outlines, uh, certain activities that we did in the course, you know, things like that. So that uh, people who attended would have time to look those resources over and then provide us feedback at the end of the meeting. We then explored uh, the units that had previously uh, there are that had taken place between, you know, the meeting that we were at and the previous meeting, including standards and essential questions. Then previewed the next unit that will be coming up, again, also including standards and essential questions. We gave students time to give feedback and input themselves before reflecting on what went well and what needs improvement, which we will also do tonight. Uh, and then discuss next steps and gave uh, people attending the meeting time for discussion, questions, and feedback.
Good evening. I am Teresa Sage, Sage Principal, as I can speak tonight. I'm Teresa Sage, Principal at Ann Sabato High School. And the following slides were created collaboratively by both Sabato and Live Oak administrators and um, and I'm going to invite Veronica Up Diaz, the principal at Live Oak, to uh, kick us off.
Thank you, Teresa, for the introduction. Um, so I will begin by sharing that a characteristic that distinguishes this course from all others is that it provides students the opportunity to discuss and study current issues that are impacting their community and beyond the state and the nation. Um, one other aspect that we have included here is that it gives underrepresented students the opportunity to focus on topics reflective of their experiences. This is a very critical aspect, uh, because studies do show that there is a definite positive impact on student learning when students see themselves reflected in the curriculum.
Hi, I'm Miki Valleja, Assistant Principal at Sabato High School. Uh, implementation took time. It took uh, more than a year of study, research, and revision prior to the first year of teaching the course. Teachers do continue to revise while teaching the course, seeing what works and what they want to change. At each of these meetings, there have been teachers, families, students, administrators, and district representatives present and also having thoughtful discussions about the course content and the student progress.
Evening, I'm Michael Marius, the Assistant Principal at Live Oak Element, at Live Oak High School. Hey, got to excuse, I'm still trying to get used to the high school elementary thing, so.
The high school.
Yeah. So the Live Oak High School. And I want to talk about just some of the things that the parents and students have shared with us during the uh, quarterly feedback sessions. Uh, these have included uh, the positive impacts of the course, which, you know, includes things like during uh, dinner conversations, they talked about their learning. Um, students have found an increase in their confidence. Uh, they've gained an openness to others' perspectives as long as, as well as other uh, things they've uh, gained while taking the ethnic studies course. Uh, the next slide, please. And also during class visits, uh, we have, we have observed critical thinking skills as an integral component of learning. Students are led to question information that they've learned during the course, uh, to draw conclusions and be able to explain their reasoning.
Good evening. I'm Frankie Kellit, one of the Assistant Principals at Sabato. Um, what we've also observed in classroom visits is that administrators have seen an abundance of student choice. So students are getting to explore topics that are interesting to them, that they're connecting with, which allows for a variety of perspectives in the classroom. Um, the class is also very discussion-based, so students are respectfully sharing their points of view and experience on topics that do not get addressed in some other other courses.
Mark Pierce, APS Sabato High School. Uh, thank you, guys. Uh, students and parents have been very supportive of the content and activities in the class. They have stated that uh, they have brought in their perspectives as a result of this course. In order to incorporate community input, teachers have attended all four quarterly meetings, uh, answered questions from families, and responded to the feedback shared.
As I mentioned earlier, we are now going to go over uh, our reflections, what we've learned from this course. Um, so we'll start with what went well. Um, as you heard from uh, our administrators is uh, just now, students have taken a lot of pride in their learning and in their work. Uh, they've improved their discussion skills, their critical reading and thinking skills. And uh, we have designed this course as a project-based learning course, uh, which means that their projects are self-driven and that they have a lot of creativity and freedom in choosing uh, not only topics that they research themselves, uh, but also the way that they present this information. And um, we've also done a couple of uh, more creative art projects that you will see on later slides. Um, their enthusiasm for the course and passion has also grown as they've gone through the course. Uh, their growth and their understanding and their interests have all, over the course of their time in this course, uh, gotten improved, have improved. Um. And we also have found the more, longer the year that went on, the better the questions got, the more curious they became about certain, about the issues that they were looking into and also the issues that we were introducing to them in the course. We will have to have a difficult conversation later about where to house this, particularly, you know, concerning things like grade level. But we did find that um, since we, it wasn't elective, we had many, we had all grade levels in our courses and all of them did excellent work. So uh, we were worried at the beginning that perhaps uh, for the younger students, that their level of maturity and their knowledge and awareness may have made the course more difficult for them. But we found that a lot of times that was not the case at all, and some of our younger students also produced some of the best work that we've seen. Um, they gained a greater understanding of one another and became more unified as a class and have excelled in their hands-on work and activities, putting huge amounts of work into uh, their projects that they're extremely proud of. And then finally, they have encountered, processed, and reflected, or sometimes, or even many times for some of them, brand-new ideas or new ways of looking at concepts, which um, again, are things that are conclusions that they come to mostly on their own, uh, after we present them with the information and ask them to process and think about it. Next slide, please.
So we're going to share some images of student work and it was really hard to, to narrow down even like a few things to show you because um, like Mr. Wang said, we just could not be more proud of the work that students have done this year. It's been really, really impressive. Um, so I'm just going to give like a little bit of an explanation on some of the images, um, if you would like to, as we go through them. Um, so this is an example of the annotated map project from first semester, which is where students got to choose a uh, population of people who have either uh, immigrated, migrated, or experienced forced migration from one place to another. And they represented that migration and movement over time on a map, and then they annotated looking at uh, what was the historical context and the cause for some of that migration, what was the impact on that group? Um, questions that they had about why that took place or um, how that changed those people's experiences. So this is an example of an annotated map project. And then I believe the next slide is an example of one of those as well. Um, so you can see how these really looked different depending upon the topics that students chose. And they got to learn a lot about that specific group and uh, their migration over time. Um, the next couple images are examples of the system models that students did for our Systems of Power Unit. So in the Systems of Power Unit, students got to choose a uh, structure and system in our society that affects our day-to-day lives and visualize it with a model that includes details that represent their research and their learning about how that system affects people. Uh, and so this student was, I mean, it's just really cute. It was, this was an example of um, a student who studied the agriculture system, and so she made a little grocery store and she talked about um, things like food labeling uh, and other topics like that. So that was really interesting.
This uh, student chose the uh, justice system and looked at uh, the way that courtrooms uh, and the way that the law is often uh, processed, I suppose, uh, can be unfair to certain populations. And so that was, that's folks of that project.
Um, the next project is also an example of a student who looked at the legal system and one of the things that they researched was um, how uh, the system by which attorneys are appointed to individuals works and how sometimes that can disadvantage low-income people due to high caseloads for court-appointed attorneys versus those that people can afford to pay for themselves.
And the final model is a model of the criminal justice system, looking specifically at prisons, uh, the way the prisoners are treated, uh, the way, the kinds of resources they receive or do not receive that, you know, they uh, that they need and uh, the consequences of, of, you know, uh, of that treatment.
And then the next uh, two slides are examples of um, a project that we did recently in our social justice unit where students got to create protest art. And so they got to pick a social justice movement and visualize a piece of art after we looked at examples of what uh, kind of art people have used to spread social messages in the past. Um, and so, uh, for example, the image on the left was a student who looked at the indigenous rights movement and specifically what they learned about was um, the importance of hair to uh, certain indigenous communities and um, a speech that was given by a um, native leader about that. And so they created this um, image as a representation of what they learned.
And the last uh, images are just to see the variety of issues that students chose to address. Um, they, the issues were broken up uh, based on a variety of things, race, uh, gender, um, social issues, systems of power. Some of them took their, learning from their systems of power projects and also put them into these art pieces as well, as well, so.
And then um, this last uh, slide is an example of a recent um, assessment from our final unit, which was social justice. And uh, these projects turned out really, really awesome. Students got to choose a social justice issue that they were passionate about and they got to create a campaign where they basically said, how do I advocate for this issue that is important to me? And so this is an example of what one student did talking about um, inclusivity of people of color and minority groups in dance, which I am not very good at, so it was really interesting to learn about that. So we're gonna um, have some of our students come up and they are going to share a little bit about their experience and then we're going to show some feedback from our surveys, from uh, written responses as well.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Addison. Um, and I wanted to share with you all about Sabato's ethnic studies class from a student's perspective. Um, firstly, Untreiner might be one of the best teachers I've ever had. She facilitated, she facilitated conversations that can be tough to talk about in a way that made everyone feel safe to share their opinions and made sure that everyone knew that there was no right or wrong answer. Um, this class in general has been an amazing experience that I remember for the rest of my life. I learned debate skills and have, how to have civil conversations with those who disagree with me. I was able to learn things through multiple perspectives that are not normally taught in schools. One of my favorite activities of this year was Identity Project. We had to film a video that discusses the identity of someone important in our lives. Um, I chose my dad and I discussed how his adoption affected his racial identity um, throughout his childhood. Um, this project helped me become closer with my dad, um, and also helped me understand other students' histories. Um, this class has been amazing for developing skills that I will remember for the rest of my life. Um, another really fun thing that we did was we went to Japan Town in San Jose, um, and we went to the Japanese-American History Museum. Um, and we had a woman who spoke to us that was in one of the internment camps, and that was just such like a powerful thing. Um, because you learn about that stuff in schools, but very rarely do we hear the voices of the people that were affected by them. Um, so yeah, this class was really awesome.
Um, hello, uh, my name is Maggie Corales and I am a senior at Ann Sabato High School and a student of Miss Untreiner for both AP Lit and Ethnic Studies. Um, I want to begin by stating how grateful I am to not only be Miss U's student, but to have been able to take this class. Um, in ethnic studies, I feel my perspective on the world has been broadened as we have been able to study a variety of topics. such as the history of immigration, systems of power in the United States and social justice movements. I felt the most impacted by the immigration project, in which I was able to interview my grandfather who immigrated here from Mexico. I felt I was able to connect with my grandpa about his and my grandmother's experience in the US and gain a wider appreciation for their sacrifices and their bravery. It was a really cool opportunity to connect with my heritage in a school setting that I don't think would have been possible otherwise. Moreover, I feel very motivated to learn about cultures and histories that are often neglected by the AP curriculum, such as the annexation of Hawaii and the formation of the police system in the United States overall. This class has been incredibly inspiring and I am very happy to have been a part of it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Ramirez. I just wanted to say that I loved this class. I think it's incredibly vital. And I feel like it provides an important intersection between sociology and history that our curriculum has been lacking thus far. I feel like at least in my history classes a lot, I see a disconnect between humanity and history. Things are presented as like numbers and dates and stuff and we kind of lose the people behind it. I feel like this class kind of really bridges that gap, especially because it's so personal to students. I wanted to highlight specifically two units, our unit on identity, which was very personal to me because my great-grandmother was in the internment camps for, you know, Japanese internment. So that unit overall, because it highlighted that specifically, was really important to me. I got to talk about my grandmother and her experiences in the camps. And I feel like having that connection to the curriculum really helped like to learn about it and keep me engaged. The second curriculum, or sorry, unit I wanted to highlight was the Systems of Power one, just because I feel like it was very important, especially at someone who has to participate in said society. So I just wanted to come here and kind of show my support for this class as a student. And frankly, I find it very telling that the only board member who came to an open presentation was one that was critical of our class. So I would just like to implore the board to be more vocal in their support and more transparent with parents. I know that's a big issue. We hear a lot about, you know, indoctrinating kids or critical race theory and stuff like that. So I feel like if the board, there's always so much we as students and even our teachers can do. So I feel like if the board was more vocal in their support and more, I guess, obvious about what this class really is and what it does for students and for, you know, our community, I feel like that would really help the support that this class does. Because I feel like it's incredibly vital and it's really been important in my curriculum. So yes, thank you.
I think that you guys can see just why we're so proud of our students because they are so well-spoken. And I just love hearing how this course has impacted them personally. And it's really great to see how different students can take away different things that are valuable from this class. So we're gonna put up some feedback that we just recently gave another survey to our students at the end of the year.
And others. And I can vouch that she is a very strong advocate for Morgan Hill and the South County community that she serves. So your voice is being heard and thank you, Dr. Cumber for that. But tonight I'm here, sorry, as I know, heavy-handed, right? I am here as a very proud parent of Sobrato Senior, who had the really joy and privilege of participating in this class. And I was able to attend the Sobrato family, I'm sorry, parent groups. I don't know what they were called, but they were at Sobrato and they were wonderful. And what I took away from that was that this class really was a nexus. There was, it was when we heard the student voices reporting back, it really was about how this class connected and put context to like things that we already knew about. There, you know, we all know about the Vietnam War, right? That's, you know, it's dates, you know, maybe some major battles. But really, what this class did was talk about the aftermath, like what happened to the refugees when they came over, when they talked about the Japanese internment camps. That was like real people and real history in California. So for my daughter, what I learned, what I was seeing was her being really invested and connected, not only with the history of California, but just her experience as an American, as a citizen, and what it inspired and what I'm seeing it inspiring her is a desire to give something back, to have empathy and be a servant, which as you know, working for, as a public servant, that's, I was like, yeah, this is awesome. So it really offered a lot of, there were some very interesting conversations that came at it. So kudos to the teachers who really gave my daughter all the ammunition she needed. Because, and what I saw was my daughter feeling empowered and being motivated to not only just like collect information, but be able to digest it and present it back. And yeah, I had to eat some words, you know, I had to kind of take some things and it was, it was a good thing. And as parents, I don't think we should fear that. You know, I don't think we should be afraid of having our children no more than us. You know, I don't think we need to put them in a box. And I think that they're, what I would, what I would like to describe, Miss Unchainer, if I may, is as a lantern, shining a light in some dark, you know, dark corners. And that's okay, because information is important, information is power. And I think that's what this class provided. And so I obviously support this class and I hope you do too.
All right. Well, thank you. Just like the feedback from, that we saw the slides from the students, we have some feedback that was taken from our four quarterly meetings that we had. So I won't read it all to you, but most of it is, all of it is really positive about what great education looks like, creating those safe spaces where some of the resounding themes that we heard through our quarterly feedback meetings. Next slide, please. And I think the next one is for our teachers.
So these are the things that we learned, things that we are going to be changing. We realized over the course of this year that, oh, that we need to start with some foundational skills. There were certain things that, just because there were, there was such a variety of different grade levels, that they came in with different skill levels and different knowledge bases. And so starting early to address those discrepancies will allow us to build into the complexity of the course more quickly over time. We also are, we're great to, or we're very pleased to find that the student choice in projects led to incredible creativity. Oh, we were worried at the beginning about how we were going to fit all of this content in and make sure that we covered as much information as possible. But, and so, you know, it was a concern at the beginning that letting students choose what they wanted to do would lead to gaps in their knowledge and things like that. However, that was not the case. And yeah, and so we were very pleased with the results of that. We would like to start also with more structured academic discussions to lead to increased new participation in class discussions, especially at the beginning of the course. It takes time for students to be comfortable with one another. And, excuse me, and so, I mean, speaking is a core skill in English and helping to bolster that in the Ethnic Studies class will be, I think, good for the learning of all of our students. Our first two units are, were too long. We can combine those to make them better. And we are definitely going to be doing that next year.
And then in addition to that, the student feedback has been really helpful in improving our practice as educators. I think we would both say about all of our students that we learn as much from them as we hope that they do from us. And so hearing what they have enjoyed and what has been valuable to them has been so helpful. And I think that we both really appreciate that the students who signed up for this class this year kind of also accidentally signed up to have to participate in more than just the class in terms of like having those conversations about what's going well. And we just really appreciate that they've been willing to do that. I personally feel like I have grown and learned a lot about myself as an educator this year and that this class has been a huge transformative experience for me. Our students have really loved, something that we saw is that they've really loved engaging with media. So things like documentaries and podcasts and even TV shows where we've gotten to kind of analyze portrayals and things like that. They've really loved. And something else that has been really valuable is our curriculum has had a lot of really meaningful crossover with students' other courses and their other learning. We've had students say that they're able to use their learning from Ethnic Studies and their social studies classes and their English classes. And it's also just been really great to even get to communicate with other teachers and see how we can collaborate on what students are learning in this class. So overall, just a really amazing year of learning, I think, for both of us. And we just feel really excited to continue to work on making this class as good as we can.
So I mentioned before that we still have to discuss the placement of the Ethnic Studies course in our graduation from Crimin's pathway. That is a step that we will be taking next year to really figure out where do we want this? Where does it fit best? Or if maybe it should still be open to multiple grade levels at once.
And then additionally, like we said, we're obviously going to continue to revise and refine our curriculum because that is what good teachers do, is every single year you look at how you can make something better and more relevant and different for the students that you have. And we will also continue to hopefully attend meaningful professional development opportunities to help educate ourselves as well. And then if you're interested in some of the resources that we shared at each of those four quarterly feedback meetings, as well as if you look at the May 15th, there was two weeks of sample lessons provided for the attendees to look at. You can open all the links that are on that site. That's it. We're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm sure my colleagues have some questions, some comments. But before we do that, colleagues, unfortunately, I closed public comment without realizing that we had one more speaker. So I'd like to give that speaker an opportunity to come on up and, and have her three minutes. And then after, we'll, we'll, we'll come back and, and ask some questions or make some comments regarding the presentation. Is that okay with all of you? All right, we'll do that. So our next speaker is Kathy Napoli.
Can you hear me? Okay. Well, you know, I love everything that the students have been talking about. But I have one suggestion and I am very upfront about that. I am Native American from a federally recognized tribe. And if we talk about historic, history in Morgan Hill, Native Americans have been here for over 12,000 years. Everyone else came about 255 years ago. And so one of the suggestions that I would have as a parent and a grandparent of children who have come through the Morgan Hill Unified School District system is that it is important to have a sense of belonging. But it is even more important to respect the original people who've been here. And I want to be very clear that we are not Indians. We are Native Americans, we are First People, or we are Indigenous people. We have a history before settlers came here. And so it's really important because we really are the invisible people. When you think about different communities and you think about cultures and traditions and languages, our people have been intentionally, well, intentional genocide has played a huge role here. We're not immigrants. We didn't come from somewhere else. We are already here. But when do you hear about the Amamutson tribe from this area? Or when do you hear about the Muekma tribe from here? This is all Santa Clara County. And it's more important also to know that there are no federally recognized tribes in Santa Clara County. Most people assume, oh, yes, there are. No, there aren't, because their recognition was taken away. And so as you develop this curriculum, I do want to share a little bit with you. AB 1703 is a bill that is talking about creating new curriculum for Native Americans. And I am on a task force because there aren't very many of us. We don't even have 1% of us that are here, but we've been here from the beginning. So it's really important to recognize that, that every culture is important. And I have the absolute joy of being able to go to the third grade classes in Morgan Hill Unified School Districts and talk about the Amamutson tribe. And I've been doing that for about six years. So I've talked to thousands and thousands of third graders. And it's never too early to talk to them about Native Americans. In fact, one of the young men that was here, he's not here anymore. I just finished doing a presentation at PA Walsh and at all the other schools. And they get it. They understand who's been here longer. So it's never too
Thank you very much. All right, now, now we'll, we'll conclude with our public comment and now go right back to our presentations. Because this is, this is the time where we can ask questions and comments regarding the presentation. Vice President.
Thank you, President Escoto. I would have loved taking this class. I know my sons would have loved taking this class. So I'm supporting the class. Okay, we good? But I have some questions. Just now, I'm putting on, taking off my parent and my like, wow, this sounds interesting hat and putting on my board hat where I turn into Eeyore. So one thing I'm wondering is, either we clone these two teachers, or we're going to have to face what's going to happen when different teachers are teaching the class? Teachers who are not as skilled in creating the safe spaces and then bringing the students along. So that's just one. I don't know if you've considered when you hand off the baton or when you increase. I'm just curious what the thoughts would be to make sure that this class is a successful, same token, the students who have come by choice to this class want to be in the class. And so it's really clear, this is not like Morgan Hill just saying, hey, let's teach ethnic studies, although it is awesome. It's a state requirement. All students have to take it. And when all students have to take it, and they don't want to take it, just something to keep in mind, because it's, it's going to really change the tenor of the class, and just things to be thinking about moving forward. And I'm wondering how as a district, we can listen to opposing opinions and have them considered in a safe space. Because we all bring our own leanings, our own perspectives. This is about learning new perspectives. And but there are perspectives that don't agree with me. And, and my just thinking, this is just phenomenal. So I'm just wondering how we can open up that discussion so to other parents, the students in the class now chose to be there. That's going to be changing in a couple of years. So it sounds like a phenomenal start. I wish my kids had been in it. But moving forward, these are some roadblocks I see that we're going to have to address.
Any other comments? Yes, trustee Goodson.
I agree that this program is phenomenal. Thank you, students, parents, everyone coming and explaining the process and what you've gone through and what you've enjoyed. I, my experience is that when you're at a school, and there's a class taught by teachers that are magnetic and inclusive and interesting, those classes gather interest, those classes gather signups. So at this point with these teachers, I don't think it would be a problem with additional kids coming in who may not have selected the class, but they're, once they're assigned, they can see the warmth of the room, the warmth and inclusiveness of the program. So thank you for all you've done in establishing that warm environment. And I know, I would guess that ours principals would only look for teachers who could teach it in with the proper skills and experiences. I was concerned with a complaint that I heard in an email from a parent who was stating that there was something not that they didn't like in one of the supplemental textbooks. And so I reviewed the textbook, and they were concerned that there was a small paragraph that said, possibly pilgrims or Puritans during that timeframe, when they came to the United States, could be considered a cult. So that was a trigger word for them. But I want to explain to everybody that it was a small paragraph in a very excellent supplemental book about Native Americans. And the book presents an accurate history of different groups that came into this country and what happened to Native Americans during that time. So I would encourage everyone who's critical of any materials to read the whole book. As a librarian, I would encourage everyone with concerns to read any texts of concern, and know that books don't harm students. Books that reflect different cultures and family experiences give us a window into the diverse world we live in, building empathy and background knowledge, which all of you are doing. And I thank you.
Is it okay, guys?
Any other comments?
Or no?
Trustee Gardner.
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you. So I, as a member of this board, would like to take us back to the development of this course, as far as the voting last year. And so in June, on June 6, 2023, the board meeting, there were several public commenters on the studies agenda. And I'm just going to read this because it's important, and I want to make sure it's captured correctly. I have the video clip. So I watched it and rewatched it and rewatched it. And the people that came in person were Wendy Dowling, to make the public comments, Rachel Schaefer, Chelsea Raw, Kelsey Goodson, Denise McElhenney, and Drew Shook. And they stayed till after 10 o'clock to be able to make it to participate in, in our discussions. Wendy Dowling shared that as a grassroots community informed ethnic studies coursework is a noble endeavor. To be able to achieve or secure and or secure a truly grassroots curriculum in the spirit intended as per the model framework, she requested additional stakeholders to be added into the group, doing the work to develop our curriculum. We were given an outline. We did not have a curriculum at that time. I, I think we're still just getting to that point. Basically, to include the roots of the community, members of the community, and parental, parent involvement in the creation of our curriculum. After listening to the various community members speak, now I'm quoting Ms. Entoriner shared, quote, "An idea she was having as parents were sharing is the ethnic studies task force is going to continue as something that they are continually reviewing with that small group of students." At that time, there were 24 teachers and administrators and five students in the development or on the developmental task force. So she said that they would continue working with that small group of students to see what is working, what they will, what they want to see, and what they want to change. And that having parents who are really passionate about this be a part of the ethnic studies task force, not the feedback community, the actual task force, with everybody else who is already on it would be very valuable, end quote. Trustee Patterson made a motion to adopt the curriculum, addressing the guardrails of AB 101 by stipulating parents and a minimum of three students, again, there were five at that time, be added to the developmental task force. And she reiterated the welcoming of parents onto the task force by Ms. Underiner, concluding that together they could come up with guardrails we could review and digest moving forward. President Montes concluded with a motion to vote with the understanding that an expansion of the current task force would happen by adding parents to the task force committee. This motion passed unanimously unanimously. Two of the parents in attendance that night, Rachel Schaefer and Kelsey Goodson, were invited by Ms. Underiner to join the task force as per the board's direction. Sadly, these parents were never given the opportunity to participate as members on the developmental task force, as district leadership never followed up with them. They have emails, etc., to prove this. They were not, the emails they sent to the district. They were not granted access to the ES Studies developmental team, nor were they met by district leadership until I intervened.
Trustee Gardner, excuse me, is there, is there a question?
Yes, I'm getting to that. I said, a meeting with parents did not materialize until February 27, 2024, eight long months after they were invited to join the task force. This needs to be remedied. We gave board direction to include parents in the developmental process, and those parents were not, that did not happen. They had their quarterly meetings with feedback to the community. But that was after it was already in the format that was like, here, we've done it. Tell us your thoughts.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I would like to know how that gets remedied.
Do you want to adjust that? Or please, trustee Patterson, please.
Your mic. If I may, the, having made that motion, the remedy has occurred in that the idea was to, and I said specifically, thank goodness, this is a pilot year, because as we go along, we can collect feedback and incorporate changes. So from my perspective as the motion maker, the remedy has occurred because in a pilot year, we were able to get going and collect feedback as we went along. The use of any term task force would have been, and if I had used that term, it would have been sort of a lowercase t, a lowercase f. As Ms. Underiner has said, parent groups were convened. I attended at least one of those meetings, and feedback was collected in that there were long periods of who would like to ask questions, who has concerns, spoken to parents, parents of, yeah, there was, there were even parents there that were considering the class and wanting to know if it was right for the child that did not have children enrolled in the class. So the remedy, in my opinion, was provided. Thank you very much. And the motion that I made, the spirit of that motion has been carried out.
Well, thank you, trustee Patterson. Trustee Gardner.
Unfortunately, you, we have a half of a community who does not feel that way. They were invited to join this, to be part of the developmental process. I believe Ms. Underiner would have honored that. But I believe the district leadership kind of got in the middle of that. I actually, if
If I may, we're having a, the discussion amongst ourselves right now. So was there anything else, trustee Gardner?
Well, I guess I'll wait to see what
I think trustee Horner, were you, were you going to comment?
I will, but there've been a lot of things brought up. I'd like to give our presenters a chance to respond. Or are we not doing that here? Usually in this, or not, I'm a little confused.
I'd rather not.
Okay. Fair enough.
But yeah, I'd rather not.
Okay, well, let me, I'll just say, I won't ask questions. I will offer comments. And the first one is, thank you all, to the, the teachers, the staff, the students who have done, who have done this hard work, you know, in, in face of some, some criticism and emotional turmoil. And to the student that wanted to know, does the board support me? You have my unending, undying support. I'm proud to have been tarnished on next door as a traitor to some. But, but this is so important. I think, you know, I was born in 1961. It was only 1967 when federal law said, actually, you know, it doesn't matter what color you are, you can get married if you want to get married. That's in my lifetime. My grandparents were overtly racist. They were wonderful people in many ways, but overtly racist. My parents, a little bit less so. And I'm trying to improve upon that history in my own way. The state of Oregon, just to our north, was founded constitutionally as a whites-only state where people not white could not own land, could not make contracts. And that actually only got removed, even though it was made moot by other authorities, it only got removed from their constitution in 2002. That's not that long ago. So, you know, there's some folks saying, why do you want to talk about this? You know, it makes people feel bad. You're making America look bad. It's like, well, the history is, is tough. Yeah. Ms. Chavez Napoli mentioned how little we talk about the people that were before, here before, the First Peoples, the Indigenous Peoples, 90 to 95% of whom were slaughtered. People talk about in Morgan Hill all the time, I like it how it used to be. I got rather heated on a one-on-one conversation. So like it how it used to be. I know there are people that liked it when none of us were here, and none of these roads were here, and none of these buildings were here, and none of these schools were here, and they were living their version of in harmony with nature. So there's always these arguments, I want to go back to some imagined better place. But from my point of view, our history as humans is difficult and ugly and divisive, and sometimes beautiful and caring and divine. But we have to lift ourself up to that place of beautiful and caring and divine. Our little pea brains don't wake up that way every morning, in my experience. So just thank you to the student that called it out. I am unequivocally in support of this effort. It's not perfect. People will be pissed. People are going to talk trash on this dais. People are going to talk trash online. People are, you know, I've already seen myself, you know, pictured as a dog. I'm just waiting for the death threats. That's one of the, one of the things you take on when you stand up in a position like this. But thank you. I appreciate you. I love the work you're doing. It's not perfect. I know you and your colleagues are going to get better at it every day. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Horner. Anyway, Dr. Montes.
Thank you, President Escoto. I appreciated hearing my, you know, my comments from my colleagues on the dais, specifically around what this means more broadly in terms of educators and building out. And as someone who works in higher ed, working in teacher certification in teacher residency programs, this is a question that's being addressed across the state, and that institutions of higher ed are, are, they're developing, right? This is a brand new initiative. And we're also looking at, how do we as a state, support the development of our teachers who are stepping into ethnic studies classrooms to be ready to facilitate and deliver this essential instructional program? So I want to thank you all for being here and your tremendous work in this effort. I firmly support the work that you all are doing in developing our ethnic studies program here at Morgan Hill Unified School District. I, I particularly appreciate the opportunity to hear from our young people, our parent tonight, and, and what they're inviting us and telling us about it. What I heard was that within this educational space, they were varying points of view, and they had conversations. But what was essential in this program was the opportunity to hear the voices of people affected by the topics being discussed. Doesn't that make us a stronger country when we're able to listen and connect with people, to empathize and to reflect on our own socialization and upbringing, so that we can move stronger together forward? What I also saw was a commitment by our educators to be reflective, continue to reflect, and, and think about how things are going and what can be improved. And that is essential. So I want to honor that commitment. In reviewing all of the documents that were provided to us, what I saw was a clear connection to the model curriculum, the four themes that were outlined, identity, history, and movement, systems of power, social movement, and equity. When we look at our course description, what we see are the following units, Intro to Ethnic Studies, Identity, History, and Movements, Humanization and Dehumanization, Systems of Power, Social Justice, and Equity. There are clear connections between the model curriculum and what is, what is outlined in our course, course outline. Having had the opportunity to visit both classrooms and speak with students in those classrooms, I, that to me was particularly special, and seeing the student-centered approach to the way in which the course is designed. I am curious for my colleague who has concerns about this, this initiative, what specifically within the course description is concerning?
Thank you for asking that.
And I'm, I'm not done with my, my comments. Because what I see is intentional thought that has been done to produce this clear alignment to the model curriculum, an approach to student-centered learning. And in your alignment and mapping, there's clear alignment to other courses, AP Psychology, so on and so forth. So I am appreciative of all the work that you have, both have been, have done. You both have gone above and beyond. And I'm grateful to have this part of our educational program here. program here in Morgan Hill.
Any other comments?
Did you want me to respond to that?
Dr. Montes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the hard work that you two have gone through. I know it's not been an easy journey. My concern lies, again, and I have publicly and repeatedly shared that I support ethnic studies, a constructive model, because from my vantage point, that Martin Luther King Jr. could be at peace in his grave, knowing that we've achieved that through the constructive model. My concerns lie in the liberated model in that example, this organizing principles, liberatory, designed, quick facts sheet, looking this up and reading it, number one, it says, well, in the, in the introductory paragraph, it says, for activists like ourselves to remain centered and focused on what really matters, here are some guiding principles to ground our work. Are we teaching an ethnic studies course? Are we teaching an activism course? I, I think that that's where the people that have the concerns that share with me, the concerns, we're wondering, where is this going? And why are we, why are we going down this particular road when we can accomplish the same objectives and have the empathy and, and get past a division and understand one another and be respectful? Because when you look at history, you want to share the good, the bad, and the ugly, not just the bad and the ugly. And on these, the guiding principles here, it says, number one, transforming power, relocating power where stakeholders, us, are in charge of their own destiny. In this school, it looks, in a school, this looks like students taking part in every major decision, like curriculum. Two, relationships are fundamental. Talks about deep meaningful, meaningful connections, we're more likely to overcome larger oppressive systems and keep our work moving in sustainable ways. Again, there are ways to address this without the oppressor, oppressed, potential victim mentality, utilizing radical imagination, calling on our ancestors and their tools, reform and transform what happened at the same time. The last one is, to me, is quite disturbing. By any means necessary. I read that, I'm like, by any means necessary? Really? That's in an ethnic studies class at a high school? By any means necessary? That concerns me.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
President Escoto, follow-up question from my colleague. If you can please clarify, because I've read these documents, what page number in our, in our Morgan Hill documents are you referring to?
This is in the outline. What are the resources, the resource link? I'd have to look, I can, we can discuss this separately offline if you want to. I would have, but I don't have that right in front of me. But it's in the outline that was provided.
I think this is, you know, I'll yield, but I have read, I think what's most essential here is when we look at, what is the vision of the course? What are the core commitments of the course? And that is front and center. And what has been presented, what is on the course outline here? And my question is, do you have any concern with the vision of the course and the core commitments that are in the outline of the course?
Well, again, I, I would like to reserve judgment on that until I actually see the curriculum.
Well, so the way in which we design courses is we look at, what do we believe in? And what is, how is this course going to be designed around? And I, I see that there's criticism of instructional tools that could be used to advance a course vision and core tenants of a course. So as someone who has expressed concern about this course, do you have any concern about Morgan Hill's definition of ethnic studies and the course description and guiding values and principles of ethnic studies as outlined in this course description?
That, that's something that I, I would, again, I feel like I need to have the curriculum. So I'm, and I don't have it in front of me. So I apologize, but that would, that would be a follow-up conversation I'm happy to have.
So as someone who we've had over a year, to read this no more than 17-page document that was provided to us over a year ago, I'm a little surprised that we haven't had an opportunity to formulate our opinions around the Morgan Hill definition of ethnic studies, course description. I know I have, and I think that's essential. That's where we're starting from, right? And when we took this vote to support the course implementation, it was my assumption that we were standing behind the course mission, course description, and the core values that are outlined, that were presented to us in this outline.
Are you talking about in the framework, the Edsource code framework?
I'm talking about in our Morgan Hill course description for ethnic studies. So when I look at the framework, what our team has done is they engaged in since 2020, 21, that they've told us in a lot of learning, a lot of professional development, to build their capacity and skillset around this topic. When this vote came to us, this course description was brought to the board, and we made a vote unanimously to support this here. And so really, what I'm interested in is just reaffirming that we can all stand by this definition of ethnic studies, this course description, guiding values and principles. And I, I'm a little perplexed.
Well, I mean, that, that's certainly your position to be had. I think that it's more, for me, there's a lot to this, and I want to make sure that we're doing things that represents the whole of the community, not just one political narrative or one political's activism roles, or however you want to say it. I'm wanting something that's fair and that is truly a grassroots effort. And I feel that by not even following the board's directive and including parents in that, other than the feedback sessions, I'm very disappointed.
President Escoto, lastly, the definition of ethnic studies says that the Morgan Hill Unified Ethnic Studies Course provides opportunities for culturally diverse histories and heritages to be highlighted and studied in a manner that can be transportative, transformative, inclusive, and affirming for all students. I wholeheartedly stand behind that. I, I find it perplexing that we can't all stand behind that.
I, I feel like, oh, go ahead. Do, do you want me to say, or do you?
I don't know. I didn't know if trustee Horner was going to say something.
Oh, go ahead.
If I may, I mean, this isn't an action item tonight, so there's, there's, there's nothing for us to resolve the concerns of my one colleague here. But it feels, and, and thank you, trustee Eze Canutson, you know, for, for bringing up the passage you did. Sometimes folks, you know, look through mountains of material looking for the aha, the gotcha moment. And I, I believe some of that's going on. And some people take offense to the word activism or cult. Well, you know, in, in the era of the time, the pilgrims were a very small religious minority from their home country that went somewhere else. And I don't know this for a fact, but I wouldn't be surprised if their fellow people of their home country at the time considered them kind of an oddball cult. You know, they have become in our national conversation, you know, something different and special, and now people are offended by that. But again, I'm not a historical expert on the era, but I wouldn't be at all surprised if in that time, many people, I mean, you know, the Church of Christ of Latter-day Saints, you know, some is popularly called Mormons, is now a recognized religion. It was not always such. That's, these things change over, over time. So I just feel like people are just looking for, aha, there, I got you. But others may differ. And we talk about activism and, you know, just one, one fun fact, the United States incarcerates 639 people for every 100,000 residents. China, that bastion of freedom, incarcerates less than 150. We're at four times the incarceration rate of China. And I don't want to live in China. I'm not here saying yay, China's awesome. I have many issues with how they do things. But we do still have deep-seated problems in our country and in our culture, which require thoughtful analysis and activism. Like, how, how are we the, the highest incarceration, incarceration rate of any, you know, organized, civilized, industrialized country in the world? What up with that? So that's a good question. And, and, and if, if, if students are, you know, being encouraged to think about these things and consider what, what an activism is necessary to not lock up more people than any place else in the world, good on you. I wish I'd been able to figure that out in my lifetime. You know, I'm in my 60s. I maybe have a decade or two of activity to go. You have a lot more than that. So please do be active because I love this country. I love much of what we've accomplished. We've done a lot great, but we have some big problems too. And if we're going to have any chance of confronting them, it's going to be these young people around us. I'm glad for what we've been able to provide, and I'm sorry for the problems we're leaving to you.
Would we have, yes, trustee Canutson?
Um, I would just hope that trustee Gardner and parents that have concerns, read through the curriculum, read through the documents. They can go to the parent meetings. Well, do we, I would ask, do we have any task force ongoing to edit the curriculum? Or is it these meetings that is any focus of discussion and change? These meetings that will be going on next year as well?
Yes.
Okay. So I would encourage people
You said yes, she said no. So
I was just, I thought you were asking a question that I could answer.
I kind of was. And then she said no, because she wasn't supposed to talk. But actually, Dr. Garcia said these meetings will continue next year. On behalf of the board, I would apologize if somebody didn't get an email or wasn't included who had an interest in the topic. I hope that we can gather their names and include them so that they can provide constructive input after reading what we are, have already approved, how far we've gone down this road as it continues.
So we have had two PRA requests for the curriculum. So I'm a little confused because you keep referring to curriculum, and we got an outline, and I'm being asked, do I agree with the outline? Well, it's an outline. So it has some resource links in it, but we have not been provided a curriculum. So I, I guess I'm confused. I don't understand.
Trustee Patterson?
Yes, I just want to clarify, in my, from my perspective, board direction has been followed. And thank you so much, Ms. Underreiner, for continuing to email the parents that had expressed interest to you after the June 6 meeting. So there's documentation of all those emails where they are invited to the four subsequent meetings that took place as part of the pilot year and gaining feedback on curriculum modification. So thank you for collective information. Thank you for inviting all of these parties to attend. There were a couple of occasions where they did attend. I think I was at a meeting with parents and trustee Gardner and one of those individuals that was invited. So I think it would be great if we could continue that practice. It sounds like year two, we're still in a pilot year. Is that correct? Because the mandate doesn't take place until fall of 20, fall of 25, school year 25, 26, the mandate takes place. So if I'm not mistaken, we have more, one more year of trying it out. And if we continue parent input meetings slash lowercase t task force, that could be helpful and including all of the names that have already been invited to provide input as well.
Thank you, trustee Patterson. Student Board Member, tour.
Um, so I'm not a student in ethnic studies. I only know a couple of people that I've taken it, but I have been a student in AP Psychology, Sociology at Gablin College and, and every single history class that I've had to take. And I do agree with some of the students that there is a disconnect between history and society. And I think ethnic studies is that perfect class that is combining what you need to know about history and the people behind that, that made that history. And I think it's very important, a lot of us up here said, our generation is the future. And I think that we need to have classes like this and have important discussions like this to continue our future and to continue building our future. So while I have not taken the class specifically, I do think that is very important that we touch bases on some of those topics that may be uncomfortable. And hearing from all of the students, you know, they've mentioned that the teachers have made it comfortable for them to talk about those uncomfortable situations. And I think that's something the teacher's doing an amazing job at, because I've never heard a single complaint from a student about this course. And I think we just need to continue building on from that and maybe looking at rewarding some things if they, you know, are uncomfortable situations. But I think as students of the future and leaders of our future, this course is something that's important to have.
Thank you, Student Board Member, Stuart. Student Board Member, Shonda.
I agree with it, but is it, yeah, it is. I agree with everything that Jasmine just said. I also want to add on that as a student, I was part of the group of students who were helping put input into what should be included on the curriculum, as well as, I know a lot of other people that I was friends with in Student Voices also contributed to the curriculum. So I do want to say that student input was and readily accessible to anybody who was interested in giving it as well as, and I think that that's in itself quite important because the students are going to be the people who are going to be taking the course. The parents, though they are wonderful and are equally as important, they're not directly being impacted by the educate, the information that's being given in this course. It's the students that are going to be taking on this information and using it to change and things like that and educate their own children. And so I think the importance of having parent input in these types of things is crucial because parents, like they care for their children, they want to ensure that they have the best education they can. But also, the students have the final say in what they take in to learn, what they like resonate with and what they continue to carry on throughout their life. And so I think it's more or less more important to keep in mind the voices and the views of the students rather than just the parents.
But I think that's my point. It's the opposite. It is the voices of the students and the parents are just kind of like, oh, gosh, we have to deal with the parents.
Well, I think the voices, the students are unanimously saying that this course is amazing and that it should be implemented. And that as of what it is right now, it's an amazing course. And I honestly really wish I took it.
Okay. I want to move us along here. Last, last comments, colleagues, to staff, students, and our site administrators regarding the presentation, I think. Please.
I have like a million thoughts just bumbling around in there. So I'm going to try and make them sound good. Um, I guess a few things, if I can focus on a couple, is I think that there is perhaps a need to clarify the fact that people seem to be using the same word with multiple different definitions. For example, the word curriculum, as an educator, as a teacher, this, this is a curriculum. This is what you would be given if you were asked to teach a new course. And then the lesson plans and materials would be that which you create on your own for your own class. But this is a curriculum. In addition to that, we are continuing to say parent input. And I think that when we are talking about parent input, trustee Gardner, it, it seems like when you say parents, you are talking about a very specific number of five to seven parents of students who are not in this class. But there is also to consider when we talk about parent input, the 140 or so parents of students who are in the class and who will continue to be in the class. And so when we talk about parents, I think it's important that we are talking about all of those parents and not only portions of them. Additionally, I have provided the documentation of how parents were included in this course throughout the year, as was stipulated. And I am hearing, and I am not trying to give an answer or anything else to this question. I just want it to be said out loud that we do not know what this, the, the feedback and development process of this course is going to look like next year. Again, when some people are saying task force and some people are saying feedback meeting, those are the same thing. The task force continued into this year as feedback meetings to which those people were invited. They are one in the same. They are not two different things. And what that is going to look like next year has not been defined. And so I don't want it to be said, oh, good, these are going to continue next year, right? And then have that be called back on in a year and said you didn't do what you were supposed to do. We don't know what it's going to look like, and that can certainly be a conversation to have. But as of now, through this pilot year, we have, and I really appreciate all of you who said that we have fulfilled that who said that we have fulfilled that ask that was set out for us. And I appreciate everybody's comments as well. We really feel your support and appreciate it. And this year has been a really wonderful experience for both of us and we just appreciate you giving us your time tonight to share about it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I don't know if you wanted to add anything. If not, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I guess just a point of clarification. We have many resources listed in this course description. We do not use all of them. We don't have time for that. Additionally, you will see when you look through it that some of these resources are more for teachers than for students. We didn't mark every single resource that has that purpose, but it is not like we are handing students every single thing that's on here and just saying, this is what you need to believe. The principles of the Bell Network were included because the Bell organization was active on our campuses and was gathering students and talking to them. And those principles, while, I mean, they are not the guiding principles of our course. They just are not. They factored into our decision on how to structure the activism course, which is why that is included as a resource. But again, it's not like we put up all those principles at the beginning of the unit and say, this is what we're going to do. So.
Thank you for that clarification. Dr. Jimenez, you want to bring us home?
Well, I just want to thank, do with your mind?
Is that okay?
Yes.
No, please.
As an admin who attended all four of the feedback meetings, I just want to say how helpful it was to hear feedback from a variety of parents, including the parents who came, some of the parents who came to that board meeting last year. The teachers were very much showcased their expertise and their openness to hearing feedback. They got some really tough questions that I think helped us to understand where some misunderstandings were and to kind of come together to have a new understanding. We had some really great discussions about empathy and about what the vision of the course is. So I'm really grateful for those feedback sessions and thank you so much to our teachers for leading those discussions and for, yeah, putting so much time and expertise into it.
Thank you very much.
I don't have much to add other than to really just have the opportunity to thank our parents and our students and our wonderful instructors and our administrators who all wanted to be part, I know we're a big group, but wanted to be part of sharing the passion and the heart for this great course. So thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you as well. And I'm hoping that you also heard the overwhelming support on behalf of this board for the program and progress that you've made and to be able to hear our students articulate how this program, how this, how this curriculum has impacted you. One of, one of you, I'm not sure who it was, that said something that I've always felt as a student when I was, when I was in high school about how this course just made history come alive and beyond just talking about dates and places, but how people interacted with one another, how people made decisions about one another and how that impacted their lives, either for the better or, or for the worse for that matter. But I, I've often said that almost 60 years ago, God, is that long? Yeah, that long. Almost 60, 60 years ago, my, my classmates and I attended a board meeting asking for these kinds of courses. And, and here we are. And I am just so happy that I'm realizing that here as a, as a member of this board. And I'm so, so thankful, so thankful for the skills and talents of our staff, our site administrators, administrators. Thank you for supporting your team members and making sure that this initiative gets off to a good start. And it sounds like it is, and it's just going to get even better. Students, thank you for coming here tonight. I know it's been a long day, but you know, sleep well, knowing that you have a lot of support here. So thank you again. We are going to take a break and reconvene at 9:22.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I am going to start off by turning it over to Dolores Akin to share a little bit about the participants of the Phonics Committee.
We, I hate microphones. This is what happens when you get old. You can't see things close up. I know, it's right here. I'm sorry, I'm just very tired right now. My name is Dolores Akin. I'm a teacher over at El Toro School and I was part of the committee that helped work on the, for the new phonics program we're looking at. And the teachers that are in bold are the ones who presented to the Curriculum Council. There are three of us here today. Our friends from San Martin could not come. And the rest of the teachers are all at the other different schools. We had about 15% of our K2 teachers participate. And again, the ones that are in bold are the ones who spoke to Curriculum Council.
All right, next slide, please. So this slide and the following slide are a little bit about greenfield learning. Learning helped facilitate this process for us and ensure that the teachers were well prepared to use outside third-party evaluation tools to look at the different curriculums that were being provided, are being evaluated. Next slide, please. And these were the two coaches. Next slide, please.
Hi, I'm Sarah Geisterfer, kindergarten teacher at El Toro. This is a Scarborough reading rope, which is an infographic with a visual metaphor. The purpose of the Scarborough's reading rope is to show what skills we need to teach students and how they need to be able to use them to become a skilled reader. Many strands are woven into skilled reading. Wonders was purchased to teach these literacy skills, but however, based on research from MHSD teachers' input and recommendation from the Curriculum Council, wonders was lacking this in the word recognition in the phonics. Next slide. So wonders was adopted in 2017. The state of California is looking at the ELA and ELD standards, but nothing will be released until 2027. So we were thinking we need something to be implemented before then to help these readers. Next slide, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Priscilla Hubert and I'm a kindergarten teacher at El Toro Elementary School. And this is actually my first year as a teacher. So everything has been new in this experience, so I've definitely learned a lot. Part of what we did was we tried to find guaranteed and viable curriculum. So those two things together really is optimum student learning. So guaranteed, it just requires like all students, no matter what, get access to the same education. And for viable, it's just the amount of content which teachers are responsible aligns with what they are responsibly teach within the time allotted. So just really leveling the playing field for our students.
Okay. And here we have a little bit of information about evaluating and piloting supplemental materials. And so there's some guidance from the Education Code that, and a local education agency may choose to use materials that have not been adopted by the State Board of Education as long as they're aligned to the state's standards and that there is an appropriate review process conducted. Next slide, please. And so here are the steps that the team went through to evaluate the curriculums. Something that's important to notice is that they defined and prioritized evaluation criteria, analyzed the materials, looked for trends and narrowed it down to two curriculums to field test. And they field tested each curriculum for about a week. And the purpose of that was so that teachers could get an experience of actually using the materials. So it was more for the teacher experience in terms of planning and providing the instruction than for the student outcomes as part of the field test. Next slide, please.
Took these steps to line with the State Board of Education's definition of evaluation. We do need a tool for next year because Wonders is not working. We need to get that so strong foundational at schools in for our kiddos. And all of the programs claimed to be research-based. We had to analyze everything very deeply, took a long time, very enlightening. And I think we are, next slide, please. I remember this. So those are the five curriculums we looked at. We've put them side by side, and we looked at 95, or I'm sorry, foundations, UFLY, PATH, and then Bridge to Reading, which is through Hagerty. So those are the ones we looked at, and then we'll explain more about what we did. My next.
So this was our timeline. We started at the end of February. We got together and we're looking at the, all the curriculums to figure out what two we would want to pilot. We piloted it for one week for each program, and then we ended it by May 22nd.
So we partnered with Greenfield Learning with their evaluation tools. So our evaluation criteria was called the Reading League. So it's a curriculum evaluation. So it's based on just neutral guidelines. So that's how we looked at all of our different curriculums. So we had a neutral evaluation tool to help us. Next slide, please.
What we did is side by side, we compared all the available assessments, the scope and sequence, what the routines were for high-frequency words, whether or not there was decodable text, the visuals for the classroom, the quality of those visuals, and then the analysis, what was the explicit language? Was it multimodal? What support there was for multilingual learners and what kind of diffraction there was in each program? Next slide. Me again? One of the things we looked at, and if you might think it's kind of silly, is we looked at the cards for phonemes and whether or not they made sense. Apple, oh, orange, not good. So there, so we made sure that there was also articulation guides on the cards, that there was material that had explicit language for teacher instruction, and that there was also word choices. So the most frequent sound syllable correspondences were on those cards as well. So all the tools, so we can guide our little guys in their foundational skills. So what we looked at to see, does it start with phonological awareness and phonemic awareness? What were the high-frequency sound spellings? Were they introduced before the less frequent ones? Continuous consonants, looking at early introduction of sounds that are closely related. So S, S, L, M, which then we start building words as we add the vowels in. Short vowels, were they early on in the sequence before long vowel sounds? Do the patterns progress from simple to complex? And then how we can introduce easily confused sounds, those also visually and auditorily. And then we looked at also how they treat blending. So all those pieces go together and progress for the students.
Next slide, please. So the team evaluated five different curriculums to start with, and their findings are summarized in the next few slides. So starting with the 95% group, you can review the glows and grows. And while there are quite a few highlights to this program, a couple of limitations included that there was limited explicit instruction for English learners. And the team was actually surprised to find that was relatively common in these curriculums. Additionally, there was confusing use of manipulatives and limited tier-two, tier-three support. So this curriculum did not meet the criteria for the team to move it forward to the next level.
For the bridge to okay. Or, is it working? Okay, okay. All right, perfect. For the Bridge to Reading curriculum, we found quite a bit of clothes. So we found clear scope and sequence, explicit teacher instruction and directions, red word instructions, which are sight word, and weekly EL support, advanced word study instructions for grades two and above, school and home resources weekly, and in English and in Spanish, and then professional learning available. Just to name a few, some of the, one limitation that we did find was some questions around the scope and sequence for unit two in kindergarten, long vowels. Next slide, please.
For foundations, there are several glows that are listed there. Again, you can see the limitation of limited explicit support for English learners. Again, teachers found the teacher manual is not user-friendly, and there was a significant focus on memorization. So this one was also not moved forward. Still me. All right. Another curriculum that was reviewed was PATH. And based on the criteria that were used, there were some glows. However, the limitations significantly outnumbered the glows, and it was not moved forward either.
UFLY was one of the curriculums that we did pilot. There were a lot of glows. It did have an explicit clear manual for the, for us to teach to the children. It also had a systematic scope and sequence of the skills. But then there were some limitations with no explicit English learner support. All the materials were online, so today would have been an issue trying to teach that lesson. And then everything had to be printed out. So that was one of the limitations that we were looking at.
All right, next slide, please. So a brief overview of the field test. Teachers who were participating used the curriculum to, for 30 to 45 minutes a day, and they continued with the current Hagerty phonemic awareness unless they were doing Bridge to Reading, because Bridge to Reading incorporates that phonemic awareness. And then they were to use Wonders to teach any of the other literacy skills, and that's how they conducted their field test. Next slide, please. So some of the evaluation highlights. Teachers found that Bridge to Reading included a phonics screener, had EL supports weekly, and several other benefits, including parent communication in multiple languages. The highlights for UFLY were the slide decks and that the teachers had access to all grade-level content. Next slide, please.
So this is two of the teacher manuals. One is on Bridge to Reading, and then the other one was for UFLY. Anyone for Hagerty could pick up the Bridge to Reading teacher manual and teach a lesson, providing equity for instruction. It would be easy for a substitute to come in and take the lesson over. Then the UFLY manual does not provide explicit T-shirt instruction, and we needed to reference guide from pages 1 to 37 in order to learn all their routines. So the UFLY was not teacher-friendly to look at the data.
So on the 14th, when we had our meeting, we voted to recommend Bridge to Reading to the curriculum council on the 22nd as supplemental phonics curriculum. And one of the reasons we really liked that is we were thinking prevention to avoid intervention. We need to get our kiddos out of LLI and reading, reading for reading to learn versus learning to read. We don't want, they need to, we need to get them there in third grade. They should be reading to learn, not learning to read anymore. That's what our basis was for this recommendation, that we want to build those strong foundational skills. That one, that one just shows.
So this was the recommendation from the Phonics Committee to Elementary Curriculum Council. Next slide, please. And so here are our next steps. We're looking at supplemental curriculum approvals, so we have the materials available for the public to view at Los Paseos here at the district office in San Martin, Gwen. If we move forward with the Bridge to Reading, then August professional will, in August, we will have professional learning provided by Hagerty. And then there will be ongoing coaching support from Kristin Matzis, our literacy tosa, and administrator professional learning on phonics classroom look force when they go through and do the classroom visits.
We done?
Yeah, we're done.
All right. Any questions or comments? Let's see, Montez.
Thank you, President Scooto, and thank you, team, for your presentation tonight. You know, as I was reviewing the information in preparation for the meeting, one of the questions that I did have was, so I know that we were previously doing Hagerty. And am I mistaken, is Bridge to Reading produced by, is it the same?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So Hagerty is the parent company, and we were doing the phonological awareness curriculum. And the Bridge to Reading is the phonics curriculum. So they have incorporated the phonological awareness curriculum into the phonics curriculum. And so the teachers would be able to cover both contents in an integrated instructional time.
Thank you for that clarification. So that was my question, because I was like, how does that fit into the ecosystem if there's already a Hagerty program in place? So what I'm hearing is the adoption of Bridge to Reading would provide, meet the need of both. So I'm seeing head nods. My, my follow-up question is, as folks who have implemented these instructional programs within your classroom, what support did you need to implement this program to a degree, to a degree you found that you were being effective?
Kristin came and met with us. But Hagerty was easy to pick up and go with. We spent about two hours with her learning how to use UFLY. Was not as successful. This, me personally, it was much harder because there were too many places to go look. Hagerty, I could, and I could explain things quickly to my kiddos when they were asking me questions. Why does this, why was this full for this? Okay, here we go. Because there are so many rules that we just know up here in our heads now, but you need to explain them to those little guys. Because once they get that, and you can ask my kids in my class what a phoneme is, and they'll go, the smallest sound. And they will tell you that, and they know what it means. They know what diagrams are, because I use that vocabulary. So we, it was, we did get training, but it wasn't like, it wasn't from the companies. It was from, Kristin helped us with it. Does that help answer?
Yeah, that helps. Thank you. Thank you for adding. And I ask because I see as the next step, that's one of the things that we're considering. And so I was hoping to get some clarification in terms of just what you see it would entail to, to roll this program out to a degree, to a robust degree where our, our teachers feel, our teachers and team feel ready and supported to implement it.
Yeah, so part of the reason we wanted to bring it to you now in June is so that we can get the materials with the new fiscal year and have them ready to go for the August PD day.
Thank you.
Trustee Knusen.
Thank you for the presentation and the slides. They're very clear. I have a couple of questions. One, how many teachers field-tested the curriculum? Was it, was it all of them, all of them on the list? Okay. And what percentage said, yes, let's just go do this? We support it?
That's the
Oh, that was the last slide, yeah.
Two-thirds.
So will there be hesitation by some of the teachers that weren't as part of the group or?
So after, it's not part of this slide, because actually, we posted this before they finished voting. But after Elementary Curriculum Council, the vote did go to the sites, and all of the sites that had voted, voted yes to move forward.
Nice, okay.
Good question.
And then are you, this is a supplemental material, so are teachers also teaching the Wonders curriculum?
So the intention would be that this would supplant the phonics portion of the Wonders curriculum and that they would continue using the other portions of the Wonders curriculum. Yeah, so our Wonders curriculum was published in 2017. Wonders Company has released two versions since then. So they've even updated their phonics within their curriculum. But like was mentioned earlier in the, in the presentation, we're not ready to adopt yet until the new framework comes out. So we want to supplement the part that we now have more information about how to teach better.
Any other questions, comments? Trustee Horner.
Thank you, President Scooto. Thank, thank you all for this work. What a, what a huge body of work. And thank you for your commitment to making sure children learn to read. When we all know we have a ways to go on that. So it seems, this seems like a good, good step forward. You know, I'm not an expert. You all are. So, so thank you for your expertise and your commitment to always figuring out how to do better, never being satisfied with where we're at. So that, that's really clear. And I'm wondering, to borrow the, to borrow the name from the book, you know, if you can share, over the next few years, where do you see this going? It seems like it might be a little challenging to be teaching, you know, taking, well, I take A from box one, and B from box two, and C from box three, and then find a few things on the internet. Or, I don't know that you're doing that. I'm just kind of imagining as you're, you know, do, is there a reasonable prospect of finding kind of something that's able to provide everything you need to teach our children these subjects? Or is that just unreasonable and, and not going to happen? So I'm kind of wondering where this is going as we wait for the state framework, in other words. Or maybe, maybe we're on a path, and who knows? The people at home want to hear you.
I, I think we're on a good path. I just, you know, we can't wait to, till 2027. We need to take care of it now for our kiddos. So that's why we're, that's why we're really pushing for this, because they need those foundational skills. I see too many kids in third grade not reading at their third grade level. They need to be reading to learn, not learning to read.
Yeah.
And that's huge. And if we catch them in K1, 2, we got it.
And as the Brits would say, the data are clear on that, right? If we, we have children reading by third grade, things are good. If we don't, things are not. So thank you for, thank you for your impatience to get better. I appreciate it.
Any, any other comments?
Well, before I thank you for your presentation, I just want to tell you that I certainly recognize how critical this decision is in moving forward. And I would hope that, you know, seeing that our, our lead person for community engagement, one of the things that I think that we also can promote and should promote along with this particular curriculum, promote with our parents is creation of home libraries and, and just really going to modeling the, the, the reading that, that, that just, it needs to take place. It needs to happen. And we often take for granted that it is something that happens, and it just isn't. And so, thank you. Thank you for the, the work. And, and you mentioned this was your first year teaching or first year with our school district?
Both. Actually, I was a student teacher here, and then I fell in love with the, the district and the community. And I'm now teaching at the school that I was a student teaching at, right next door to my mentor teacher.
Welcome and congratulations on your first year.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much.
A round of applause, yes. All right, next up is K3. We're going to have a public hearing on the 2024-27 Local Control Accountability Plan, also known as the LCAP. Assistant Superintendent Jimenez will introduce this item. We're going to have a public hearing right now. Public hearing is now open, and our first speaker is Sonia Bennett.
I'm glad I have an audience here. We just think it's safe for just a second, and then it's like, give me about one minute only. I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but. How many, a show of
Time has already started, so.
That's fine. Please, show of hands, how many have read the LCAP document? Show of hands, high hands, please. How many have not read the LCAP document entirely? No shame. This is, the LCAP document is 264 pages. It was released on Thursday at about 11:00 PM. No feedback, little feedback, means that parents are not reading it. They don't understand it. They don't comprehend it. I always like to print out papers and make notes. I like to review them with my principal, school site committee. The budget and the LCAP, the presentation material, is is over 500 pages. It's 615 pages in entirety. And it's something that I, I want to, I've been to the LCAP meetings. I thought the, the best meeting for the LCAP was the one that we had at Sabato in the library. It was very informative. There were parents, multiple parents. It was wonderful. It was very engaging. We got to understand what other parents were thinking about different grade levels, different schools. It was very engaging. The other ones didn't really prepare us for this 264 pages. I'm extremely overwhelmed. I do want to give feedback, but I can't even meet with my principal, my teachers, the school site committee, because there just isn't enough time. I feel inadequate. Maybe it's, maybe you don't want my feedback. I'm not sure, but I think it's, most of parents want to, but they're not sure what to do. And I think I have some solutions. I don't always come with problems. I have some solutions, but I, we have to work through this to try to figure out how we can get through this LCAP to get proper feedback. This is very complex. Whenever I see something very complex, I try to benchmark. And I've gone to other districts, LCAPs, Gilroy, 87 pages, 25 pages of presentation material opposed to Morgan Hill Unified School District, 264, 97 pages of a presentation material for LCAP only. Just extremely complex. And I don't know if this is purposely made to be a complex, so parents don't come here and speak up. I'm not sure. I, I hope you do have some feedback from parents and I'm not sure where to go with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anahita Yazdi.
I just want to echo much of what Sonia said. The LCAP was published nearly at midnight on a Thursday, heading to the weekend, over 250 pages. I provided the detailed feedback reference to each action in the feedback survey that was done by MHUSD. So I hope you all will get a chance to see reference to each action that I did look at and went down and provided feedback. But in this three minutes, I just want to highlight a few things. Professional development is a common action that shows up on this LCAP report. While this is crucial for development of teachers, it also serves as justification for many unnecessary contracts that has come in the past to the board to get approved, guest speakers, redundant workshop trainings that are questionable with a positive impact to student outcome. For example, chronic absenteeism reduction was one of the ones with a heavy PD emphasis. Which brings me to my next comment, lack of transparency on the root cause analysis of chronic absenteeism. I had asked Dr. Jimenez for that non-confidential data analysis that had led the district to those corrective actions. Is this a seasonal pattern? Can we break it up by grade? Can the public see that data to see how you ended up with those corrective actions? On goal three, quickly, the mental health infrastructure enhancement, there was an action 31C. It was funded by grant. I do like to remind the board, although things, 1.2 million or something was funded by grant money, any expansion, even on grant money, has operational expenditure impact. And these end up being unsustainable ongoing expenditures. There is a heavy focus on expanding face. And my question again is the efficacy of centralizing family engagement, where family engagement happens most effectively at every school site. Brings me to a $2 million investment, action 30N, which aims to create community schools, which is a great, wonderful idea at every school site. Given this significant investment in community schools, it raises the question, why do we have, why do we continue allocate funds to the face center that serves the same purpose? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that we have no other speakers on this item, I'm going to close public comment. All right. Dr. Jimenez.
Good evening, trustees. Want to wait for us to have the presentation up? Thank you so much. So tonight, we have a presentation on the Local Control Accountability Plan, the Budget Overview for Parents, and the Annual Update. All those must be presented together, because we will be soliciting more adoption for those. And then the two other items that are not subject to the public hearing, which are the, the federal addendum and the local indicators. So next slide, please. So on the next slide, you will see our attempt on making sure we have some sequential presentation that is kind of guiding us and providing a roadmap for tonight. So we're going to talk about what's the LCAP, what's in the LCAP, right? There are sometimes questions about the funding and what should be in the LCAP representative compared to a budget presentation, which is my colleague, Ms. Timbo, will have next. We're going to talk a little bit about the annual update. It is a requirement by Edco that we present to the annual update. If you remember from our conversation in Jan, in February, we presented the mid-year update. So this is the bookend to that presentation. We have to present the Overview for Parents, Budget Overview for Parents, which our, Ms. Timbo will help us with. And then we're just going to take the sections of the LCAP and give you a, a view of the metrics, the community input, the online survey, some of those actions. We'll talk a little bit about the CSI plan and then some instructions that have to be included. Sometimes folks will say it's very lengthy. There are things, but by law, we have to include on that template. And then Crystal will be sharing a little bit about those indicators. Those are the ones that you see on the dashboard when it gets reported out. Those are the self-reflection tools that our team did to see where we are in our, on our roadmap and in our journey. And then I will be presenting the federal addendum, which is a strategy and alignment document that we must put together in order to show the federal government how we're using those categorical fundings like Title I. So that's a long introduction, but hopefully we can get you through it with ease. So just for edification, right? Well, what is the Local Accountability Plan? This pretty much gives you the sense of we're required to develop, adopt, and annually provide a three-year LCAP, right? Using the template that's adopted by the state of California and by, it seemed by statute, and then approved by the school board or the state board of education. I did have a parent saying like, why do you present it this way? And I would say to you that we've all have ideas in our team of how else we could present it, but we are required by law to use this template. The LCAP has to include obviously a description of the goals achieved by each of the student groups. And we're going to talk a little about who they are and why they're mentioned in the LCAP specifically. And it must address each of the eight state priorities. So I always talk about this. I think I shared with you in January when I gave my, my mid-year update and then an update toward the progress of the LCAP, is that we just can't put any action we want. Those actions have to be aligned with those eight state priorities that have metrics attached to them that are adopted by the State Board of Education. And then the LCAP also has to include an annual review, which is what I spoke about briefly. So just a little bit of the runway. Thank you for the public hearing. We just had that. So I'm not going to rehash that, but we're required, just for the folks who are reading that presentation and kind of want to know, why do we have a public hearing? It's like surround sound.
By the way, while, while, I'm going to take this opportunity right now to, colleagues, we're going to have to extend our, our board meeting beyond, beyond 10:30. So if I can have a motion.
I, I move that we extend our board meeting to.
11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
I agree.
Well, we've got a motion for.
May I make a comment on the motion?
Yes.
There must be a way to mute that laptop. Okay, yeah. Under our bylaws, we can only extend once. So while 11 sounds lovely, I would propose that we, it's really weird hearing myself. Thank you. Probably extend till midnight and hope to do better.
I move that we extend the, I think you're still being optimistic. So let's just say one, and then we don't have to worry about coming back.
I'm sorry, I can't. I, I will literally be asleep in my chair after midnight. I've been up since five this morning. And it's just, if we have to, if we can't get through this all, then we're going to have to schedule another meeting to continue it. Those early discussions, well, I, I cannot, I don't know about the right, and, and you only need, you only need four to continue business. But I am not going to be useful after midnight, I promise you.
It's about 11:30. We agree on 11:30?
Second the motion.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. All right.
Here we go. All right. Next slide, please. All right. Justies just said, I talk fast, fast. A requirement to address the, I already addressed this, right? The eight state priorities are an essential component. At a minimum, we have to do that because that is included in the local control funding formula. That's what LCFF stands for, and it needs to provide a summary of that funding as well. Next slide. Right. This is a really important slide that I really would like, that both the trustees and I think our guests and folks are listening on Zoom. It's what's in the LCAP. Sometimes the LCAP is confused with the general budget, and it is not. It is only encompassing the LCFF supplemental funding that's designed to do a couple of things, to increase and improve services for unduplicated students. Sometimes the things that we put in the LCAP are actions that support all of our students. But the object and the purpose for supplemental funding is to increase and improve services for those students who are unduplicated, underrepresented, right, and are struggling in our district. So that includes particular ethnic groups that are singled out by the, this differential assistance, right? The California Department of Education, socially economically disadvantaged students, English learners, long-term English learners are called out this year specifically. So you'll see some actions about that. Students with disabilities, foster youth, and homeless youth. This is a really important slide because we often get questions of like, why isn't, you know, transportation included in the LCAP? That's not the, that's not, this is not the mechanism for that development, for that funding. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague.
I talk fast. Ready? So one of the questions we often get is, you know, again, why do we cover certain things and certain things we don't? So our state identifies eight priorities that we have to include in our LCAP. And so we put these, I like to, we talk about these, putting these in different buckets. So one of the buckets we, we talk about is conditions for learning. And so under conditions for learning, we put basic services. We put implementation of standards and course access. Another bucket we look at is engagement. So we put parent involvement and family involvement. We put student engagement and school culture under engagement. And then the last one is student outcomes. So under student outcomes, we often put student achievement and then clearly student outcomes under these priorities. And so we have to address each of our action items and our goals have to hit one of these. And we have to address all eight of these priorities throughout our LCAP. So these are requirements in our actions and in our goals to hit as we go through our, our items. So it's not like we can say, oh, we're not going to do this, or we're not going to do that. We have to address each one of these eight state priorities throughout our plan.
Okay, so although we are talking about the new LCAP, the previous LCAP is currently still in progress. And so in addition to working on and presenting the new LCAP, we are also continuing to implement our previous LCAP and then need to continue reporting on that. And so we have an annual LCAP update, where you are in our third and final year of the, of the current LCAP, the purpose of which is to report and review the progress that we have made towards the district's goals over the past three years to identify the effectiveness or the ineffectiveness of the actions in making progress towards those goals. And then to identify the changes that will be made to the future LCAP from what we learned from our previous LCAP. So our goal analysis for the annual update includes an analysis of how the goal was carried out in the previous year, a description of any substances differences between the planned actions and then the actual implementation of these actions, and an explanation of material differences between budget expenditures and estimated actual expenditures and/or planned percentages of improved services and estimated actual percentages of improved services. And then an explanation of how effective or ineffective the specific actions were in making progress towards the goal over the three-year LCAP cycle. And then a description of any changes made to the planned goals or metrics or desired outcomes or actions for the coming year that resulted from reflections on prior practice. So we're going to take you through the annual updates by goal. So this, again, reminder, we're talking about the current LCAP.
Thank you, Corina. So we've divided the, oh, I think it's the, it's okay, it's okay. So the previous slide just had a title page that talked about what is goal one. So goal one is about advancing college and career and civic readiness for improved year-over-year student achievement, which is that conditions of learning, oh, student achievement, which Jesse talked a little bit about. This slide just gives you a sample, a sample of the metrics. You have the entire annual update in your board packet, because it would be lots and lots of slides to put all of the metrics. So you should know that this team looked at every single metric, updated it to make sure that we can bookend and had a lot of conversations about the implementation of that. In the next slide, you will see just a few of the reflections that we, we looked at as we talked about, an explanation of how effective or ineffective the actions were. This is just a sampling. If you read the annual update, it's quite lengthy. So there was lots of conversations, both about the results and the gains that we made as a district, the places where we had a little bit of challenges, whether that is because we did like work within our contractual time versus the professional development that we thought we were going to offer, whether it was hard to staff a particular position, or whether it was, that goal was, metric was basically discarded a year before. And so we had nothing to compare it with. So what you'll see on the annual update is a lot of reflecting of how we did in goal one. And so what you see in front of you is the places that we think we've made significant progress. But what you'll also see in the annual update, the places, and particularly, I would encourage you to read the annual update. The very last part, I know it's a lot of text, but the very last part of each of the goals and focus goals tell you what we're going to be carrying over to the next LCAP, which is the one that we're going to be talking about tonight and some of the conversations that we had.
All right. This is Focus Goal 1.1, which is a focus on elementary literacy. Next slide, please. Several of the metrics that were part of the original plan had been retired due to programmatic redesign. So one of the metrics that had longevity was the CASP data. And what we noticed was a need for additional targeted data to support teachers' instruction and drilling down to the students' needs. And that's why we added iReady to replace the, the map assessment. So on the next slide, much of the reflection speaks to, for the past year speaks to what we learned through the iReady data. And we focused really on the universal instruction or the, the first instruction that happens in the classroom, as well as targeted support, which was formerly Tier Two. And the data in iReady shows that the students are making progress. Also, we provided specialized training to the reading intervention teachers, as well as 30 staff, including reading intervention teachers on the Orton-Gillingham approach from the Institute for Multisensory Education. And then we are looking forward to receiving this year's CASP data, because we have had some promising results from the iReady data. Next slide, please. And this is Goal 1.2, which was a focus on elementary mathematics. Next slide, please. Again, here's the CASP data because it had the, the longevity, and it does include the year three outcome data is last year's CASP data. So we are still looking forward to receiving this year's data. Next slide, please. And we focused on professional learning opportunities and supplemental math materials, as well as developing a deeper understanding of the newly adopted math framework. And the students are receiving supplemental math resources through iReady, and the local data shows that they are making improvements. Next slide, please.
So goal, goal 1.3 focused on middle school readiness to high school. Next slide. And so just looking at a sampling of our metrics where we see a reduction in, excuse me, an increase in grades from the baseline to the three-year outcome of As and Bs across sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and a reduction of Ds and Fs. And then in, in terms of chronic absenteeism, our baseline was 2019, 2020. And, you know, we see a 15% and then a statewide of 12%, a dramatic increase statewide of chronic absenteeism. It's something that we've all been struggling with post-pandemic. But we're starting to see some promising results. So if you could go to the next slide, please. Internally, we are seeing a reduction of between eight and nine percent chronic absenteeism. Internally, we are seeing a reduction of between eight and nine percent chronic absenteeism from last year to this year. And that has to do with a lot of our sort of the work that's happening at the site, some of that professional development that we hope to continue for, for next year. And then I just will highlight that our reclassification efforts have been paying dividends. Our lovely TOSA, Ashley, who's, who's back there. We are, we're, we're looking at 197 students being reclassified this year, whereas the last two years we've had 140 each year. So, so dramatic increase there. Next slide, please. Goal 1.4 focuses on high school student success. And so if we look at some of the metrics, you know, from the baseline year, we had an 87% high school graduation rate to a 92.8 last year. We've had a dramatic increase, 10% increase in students that are passing AP exams with a three or higher. And a, you know, 182 students completing CTU requirements back in the baseline year to 282 last year. And so if you go to the next slide, please, these are, again, are just some of the reflections of some of the metrics that, that I just mentioned, highlighting, you know, our, our freshman success program in ninth grade and then our dual enrollment program that is expected to dramatically increase next year. Next slide.
Okay. The next, the next goal is LCAP goal two, which of course we all know is family and community engagement. And here are, is a sampling, just some of the metrics that we looked at, mainly focusing on participation and also the Hanover survey, which, which started, I believe, when the new LCAP started. Next slide. And then these are some of the accomplishments, things that were, were implemented during the three-year cycle. The position of the director of family and community engagement was filled. Community liaisons now meet monthly to collaborate and, and worked together to create a handbook for their work, which not only, not only is, is really beneficial for those that are new to being a community liaison, but also keeps them on track and has helped to standardize practices across schools. And then the family education opportunities, there's a long list there. And then the family and community engagement plan is really, really close to completion. And then of course, we continue to work with the ELAC and the MPAC and the DLEC committees.
For LCAP goal three, annual update around social, emotional learning, well, student engagement, social, emotional learning, social climate, fostering relationships and wellbeing. Some of the metrics have to do around chronic absenteeism, high school dropout rates, suspension rates, discipline, and then our own school metrics around how students feel and about being at school. So just historically, again, around statewide, we've seen a huge spike in chronic absenteeism. And as we look at the root cause analysis, a lot of it is around anxiety and mental health. And so we're really trying to address that through professional development for our teams, working with our wellness teams and identifying needs for our school avoidance and how do we support our students and our families and understanding what that means around school avoidance when we look at those root causes. In addition, we also are looking at suspension rates. We do see an increase. We are also looking at how to support students with some of those ACEs, early childhood trauma. That happens as well as the pandemic played a role in everyone's experiences in our schools. We also have tried to really try and enforce data documentation and really making sure that our systems are clear. And so how do we support PBIS restorative practices and continuing our MTSS journey throughout our schools? Next slide, please. So a few reflections again is we're really developing that tier one, a strong foundation for students and building, what does that look like to have positive supports at schools? How do we create restorative practices throughout our community as well as looking at how do we create relationships so that every student has a positive adult to go to? And how do we help support students in, in developing those skills, those social, emotional learning skills that they need to be successful at that tier one? And then really looking at universal supports and then building up those supports through tier one or through tier, tier two and tier three. Next slide, please. We also have goal 3.1. Essentially, this is kind of talking about our wellness centers and how we are supporting students' mental health through those wellness centers. It also incorporates a little bit of that behavior. As we know, students that are, that are showing behavior issues are often telling us a story just through different meetings. And so what is that story and how do we support them? I often like the quote of students don't, aren't an issue, they have an issue. And so what is that issue and how do we solve it and help support them in that? So you can see there's an increase in our student visits between the original baseline and our three-year outcome, as well as our referrals out through our PEISLS grant contract. Next slide. A couple of just reflections is that we have our continued work with wellness and, and working with students on being able to self advocate, self refer, as well as the stigma around mental health and making sure that our students know how to advocate and knowing where to get that support as they need. How we continue supporting elementary, middle and high school with our wellness centers and our schooling services and continuing our partnerships and how do we expand and making sure that every student has a support that they need? Whether that is specific mental health, whether that's a mentorship, whether that's a pro-social activity, whether that's a support group that they need, that maybe it's just finding somebody that has had a similar experience with them to be able to have a shared conversation or be able to see, you know, themselves and someone else and be able to work through those concerns and issues in a safe space with them. And so we really want to work with our partners in our community to, to be able to have every opportunity open for our students.
Okay. So about partway through the three-year cycle, we were given the notice that students with disabilities now be, were part of the unduplicated student population. So we created a goal around equity and inclusion for students. When we looked at our metrics, you're going to see that COVID was not kind to most students, but especially students with disabilities who did not learn well under distance learning. And so we saw a decline in our, our, our performance in English language arts and in math. And, but we did see an increase over the years in our ability to have more students in a more inclusive environment. Some of the highlights are that we were able to provide a great deal of professional development and on-the-job coaching for our administrators, our teachers, our support providers, our paraprofessionals. And we were able to have more students stay in Morgan Hill School District by increasing our least restrictive environment numbers. So we had fewer placements outside of the district. Are there any questions about the annual update? For anybody?
Okay. Well, thank you so much for that kind of whirlwind 30,000-foot view tour of the annual update. We, we do appreciate your attention. I know it's, it's quite dense a little bit. We're going to get to the main event, which is the LCAP proper that it took. I mean, I am just incredibly grateful for this amazing team of people behind you who've spent like hundreds of hours, right? Both in the development process, sifting through that advisory data from all sorts of points, having their heart and soul and having those conversations about what is the best way to support those students that were outlined in the beginning part of our presentation. So I'm just incredibly grateful that I get to work with an amazing group of people every single day. We're going to skip to the next slide, if you wouldn't mind. I wanted to start to the main event and just share with our community, anybody who's looking at our LCAP input and timeline process, which is readily lengthy. We really started in September. I know it says October, but those were like in-depth conversations. This team wears a scars. They all have a tattoo that says LCAP on it, right? Because our meetings were like from 10 to one every week because we had to make sure that we were sharing information with our communities, right? Planning those events takes quite a bit of time. I'm going to give a great shout out. This is going to sound like an Oscar speech, but certainly I feel like an immense sense of gratitude for everybody in ESD because putting posters together, doing the events, getting all the other things, right? To make sure it's successful, events are successful. It takes a whole cadre of people. But just to give you a rundown, we, we, we were very intentional about the, where we placed the community forums, when we had LCAP advisory committees, when we'd be sharing data and all those things. I think it's an important process that shows that very strong collaboration and community collaboration about soliciting feedback. As we triangulate that feedback with those eight state priorities, the data that we're gaining from the dashboard, our internal data. So there is a lot of triangulation that happens, but I wanted to make sure I highlighted that, that development timeline. And then if you can go to the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to one of our fantastic.
So as has been said, feedback was a super important part of this process and being in person as much as we possibly could. So for, as you can see, there are a vast number of groups that we met with, and it wasn't just a case of giving a presentation. A large part of the time we spent was feedback. Certainly the two presentations I was involved with, the, the feedback was way longer than the presentation itself. In fact, for the DLEC, they met four times and looked at a goal at each single meeting. And we could actually have added the roundtable to that, too. So a super important group, of course, are the students. Last time that this process went through, they had to come to us and there was just one session. This time teams went out to six of the schools and ensured that there were people that the students knew, not just people that they had no idea, so people they were comfortable with. And having got some feedback from a student, it's like, wasn't it for us? So an infographic was produced so that they also had that information. So really made that feedback for students very different to how we were working with the adults. So we could get their feedback in an appropriate way. Next slide, please. And then as well as the in-person, we had the online. So there were four windows where the online survey could be completed. And this was publicized through social media, through websites, through parent squares. The schools also did a great job through their school bulletins in encouraging parents to complete that. And you can see the numbers there. And it's about double the responses we got from the last time that this process was done. And then next slide, please. So here we are with our ice cream. So we have all this information. And so then pulling that all together and then funneling that through. So where we've got their coding, that's like looking at each piece and then looking for those patterns. And so bringing them down so we could then report on those themes as they went through that funnel. And just to emphasize, every piece of feedback was, that was submitted was read by staff. It was given a lot of personal attention.
That's the other tattoo we all have, that every piece of feedback was read by multiple people, not just one person. Next. Thank you. And so, so we have feedback, but we also have these requirements from the state that we have to use to build these goals. And so those are indicated here. We have these like new little tags on there as well that are, are new additions by the state this year. So any red indicators, district-wide and by site had to be called out. And you'll see that as you read through the LCAP in the, in the, in the introduction, you'll see like a long list and that, that is us calling those out. Every district is required to do that. And then as Dr. Heman has mentioned, now long-term English learners are called out. There should be specific goals and actions tied to the reduction of long-term English learners in our district. And then just as a caveat, a long-term English learner is a student who has been identified as an English learner for six or more years. And then students with disabilities and then new is now our groups in differentiated assistance. For us, those are English learners, students with disabilities, homeless youth, and then our students that are African-American in terms of chronic absenteeism. Next slide, please. And so tons of feedback, certain criteria that we have to look at. And then we look, we hold up the mirror and we really dive into the data, not just the state data, right? The dashboard and other metrics, but, but our local data is super important. And so this is just like a snippet of what we looked at. And then within that, just think there's like subfolders upon subfolders upon subfolders of each bullet that's on here to, to create, to start really creating that roadmap of where we were headed with, with the goals that are, that are before you tonight.
So another, another part of feedback is the quantitative. So we want to really make sure that we have another voice. So not everyone can come to our meetings and our forums and our, and be in person. So we wanted to give an opportunity for people to provide input through their survey. So we provided the Hanover survey and the opportunity for people to answer important questions that we wanted to get feedback around the different goals. And so these next couple of slides talk about each goals and the questions and the responses. So I'm not going to go over every specific piece of it, but there's some highlights into each piece of that. So that last one was goal one. This one's around goal two. And so some just highlights on that one, I want to say is that, that communication one, you can see on the right hand, that 86, 86, 73 is a little work there. But that has to do around like providing information by email. And so not everyone necessarily likes email. So what are some other ways? But you can see 86, 86, 80. There's that positive communication around how we're, how we're communicating with our parents and then parent involvement. And one of the, the areas of growth is how a lot of people are saying there's conflict. So how do we then provide alternative ways of meeting with families at different times, different places, you know, maybe right after dropout, dropout, drop off. See, I'm about to, either way, it's getting late. So how can we be creative in when we offer different times to meet with parents? Next slide. The next one is goal three around student engagement. So it talks about students, you know, wanting to come to school, feeling like they like going to school. So what are some ways that we can engage our students in wanting to come, come to school? And really for me as an educator is how do we make our lessons engaging? How do we make them fun? How do we make them relevant to students and their learning? Perfect example, ethnic studies, just throwing that out there. But really, how do we create that environment for student learning and buy-in? And then school climate, feeling safe, feeling that they have well-rounded curriculum and that they have adults to go to when they need to have someone to talk to. Next slide. And then the last one is again, our goal four around our students with, with special populations. And so really, how do we have after-school participation and families being, feeling like they, that they can participate in after-school? So we have some work to do. So how can we make sure our special populations are included in a lot of our extracurriculars and that they feel that there is really inclusive opportunities for them and resources? So just to highlight a couple, if you take all of that data now and then you synthesize that into sort of this understanding of some recommendation based solely on the online survey data, some of those recommendations is just really to continue and enhance that engagement, providing explicit opportunities. So again, it's how do we provide more opportunity for input? How do we be creative in our timing? How do we provide more opportunity for communication? So just really enhancing that, those different spaces for parents to come in and provide that input. Continuing to tailor our instructional strategies, increase student engagement. That's that first grade instruction, professional development, learning opportunities for our teachers to be able to have new and engaging ways to, to provide their curriculum and their instruction. And then really reviewing and enhancing our support structures within special education students. So how do we have inclusive practices, provide universal design and really incorporate those really great tier one, tier two and tier three strategies to keep students in our least restrictive classrooms? Are there any questions on the presentation of this section thus far? No? Great.
Oh, we do have a question. Rusty Knudsen.
When you're talking about student engagement and looking at the data, I don't know necessarily the engagement or the test scores, but I think there seemed to be a drop-off in middle school and high schools. So when we come to the, the goals and the directions, is that where our focus is? I mean, did you take that into account? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's, you kind of teed it up really well for me for the next part of it, which is now we looked at. So the survey that we sent, that, that we provided, the online survey, and when we view the goals, they have to be the current LCAP goals, right? So we use that information plus the data that Crystal was talking about, both our internal measures, our external measures, right? Think of the dashboard. Then we took all the parent feedback, right? We took the online feedback. When I say it was like, you know, this much data, it is a lot of great data, but then you have to sift through the data and look for patterns, right? And think about, you have seven and a half million dollars and you have to provide supplemental services and you have to address those indicators. And so that was a lot of great thoughtful conversation about like, what do we want the broad goals to be to address those needs? And then do we need focus goals? If you turn to the next one, this is, this is what the team based on all those triang, and triangulation doesn't do it justice because it should have been like a di, dihedral dice, right? It's like 20-sided, right? Dice, because that's the way it feels like when you're looking at the need and you're looking at the advice from our, all of our stakeholders, including students. And so you, goal one is. And so you, goal one is very simple. Remember that bucket that Jesse was talking about, which is student outcomes, right? Prepare all students for college career and civic life through equitable, high-quality, inclusive instruction. We learn from the goal from the last LCAP, right? We weren't going to have someone singling out that we need to build inclusive environments. We're going to embed it in what we're doing. That is one of the lessons that if you read the annual update, that little section that I told you, like, what did you learn this year? That you're going to migrate over to this LCAP, right? That is making sure that inclusion is part of the conversation and the language. The other thing that's a little bit different, we continue to have a goal about elementary academics because it's important for us to be able to think about what's needed in elementary school. I came from secondary, right, and worked my way down. I only taught one year of Kinder, it was a bad year for those children and me. And I enjoyed secondary much better, right? But we all know that the needs of elementary children are different than the needs of the high school students, right? So we kept a focus goal in elementary academics. We kept a focus goal to trustee Eves Knudsen's about middle school, right? They need something different. Those are the kids in the middle, right? There's actually a publication for middle school called The Middle, right? Because their age, their development is different. So they need specific goals and actions. We kept high school because we want to see the product going out, right? We want kids who are college and career-ready. And then if you notice that, we added a different focus goal, which we did not have last year, which is calling out what we're doing in our organization to provide support for our English learners. One in five of our kiddos in our district is an English learner. And so we need to make sure, we need to spell it out and we need to stand as an organization, this is what we're doing to increase those outcomes for English learners, no matter where they are in their journey. And then the last focus goal that we included is how do we improve equity and access for all of our diverse students, no matter where they are? And making sure we address the needs of the students with disabilities. So that's all encapsulated in goal one and then those focus goals. We have a goal two, which is about family and community engagement. Because I will say that one of those eight state priorities is family and community engagement. We have to address it. So we have a goal on that on that as well. And then goal number three, we kept it a little bit the way we have now with a certain little tweak. So goal one is about climate and culture. Remember what Jesse talked about those buckets? One of those buckets is school climate and culture. So we have a goal about enhancing student engagement, social emotional learning in a climate that fosters relationships and well-being with a focus goal on the well, the wellness centers and what we're doing in that work. So we learned a lot through going through the annual update, even though sometimes it was very intensive and that writing of that document and sifting through all that data. But I think that the goals and focus goals that we are putting before you for your feedback and consideration, because it will not be adopted until the 18th. And the public has the also ability to give us feedback all the way to, you know, June 13th. So two weeks of feedback through that survey or through email is about addressing the needs and looking through all that data and making sure that each of those students that we are required to represent is represented in these goals and focus goals. So I'm going to take the first one and again, kind of give you a brief synopsis. So broad goal one, which is you'll see some of the metric. Can you go to the next slide, please? Yes, thank you. So my teammate said, like, you're introducing it, you got goal one. So this is a sample of the metrics that you see in the LCAP, the twenty-four, twenty-seven LCAP and the budgeted expenditures. I want to call out to you something that I think Tina brought forward, which is about the math alignment, right? That's the second piece that's there. We listened not just to the feedback from our stakeholders, right? Which includes our our community, our families, right? But also our staff, right? Our staff are telling us, today you you heard a little bit of the phonics presentation. That came from staff when I first got here who said, can we do something else about phonics, please, right? And so we also heard from our teachers, while professional development is called on the focus goals, it is because it comes from feedback from staff saying, we would like more professional development on these areas to make us better at our craft as well. And so that second thing, the second line there about TK-12 alignment, it is about district-wide mathematics, professional development. We have a brand-new framework. We have a lot of work to do and a lot of learning to do to get ready for that adoption that eventually will happen, hopefully twenty-six, twenty-seven. Next page, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. And then for your consideration, and it's included in your in your board packet, is some of the metrics that are aligned to the broad goal one. All right.
All right. So next we have the proposed goal around elementary academics. And here is a selection of actions and expenditures. And you'll notice there's a heavy focus on literacy and math as we've been kind of discussing over the evening. The early elementary literacy and math is really where we want to focus to try to close those gaps early. And our dashboard indicators show that our students in third grade are really struggling. And so we want to make sure that we're getting them the solid foundations they need so that by the time they take that state test, they are well-equipped. We're also, there's also some actions in there around UPK or UTK, so universal pre-kindergarten and universal transitional kindergarten to help equip our teachers to be better prepared to serve the younger students who are going to be joining our system. Starting in twenty-five, twenty-six, all four-year-olds will be able to enroll. And we want to make sure that our teachers are well-prepared for that. Also not mentioned on here is that we will be preparing for the new reading difficulty screener that will be required starting in twenty-five, twenty-six. And so there's a, there's an action item for that as well. And here is a sampling of metrics. On the left is the current scoring for our students. And then on the right, we have the goals. And of note is the way that we wrote the goal is that our long-term goal is to, that 100% of students will be at or above grade level. And we want to help students build their way there because we know that some of our upper-grade elementary students are a little further behind. And so the overall rate is that students will progress by 10% annually. And then the student groups will increase by 20% annually. Because when you look at the data, they need additional support and acceleration to meet the same performance as their overall peer group. Next slide, please. And then 1.2 is middle school academics. And so there is a goal here focusing specifically on our middle school students. The sampling of action items speaks to the supports that we are providing to those middle school students. So you will see the MathTOSA on there as well as Avid and Cal Soap supports. There's an intentional focus on academic supports by providing the middle school counselors. And that's really to target that area of need with our middle school students who do need that special, unique support to to help make their academic progress based on the red dashboard indicators. Next slide, please. And here you will see, similar to the elementary goals, there are our metrics, I'm sorry. There are the iReady data for sixth, seventh and eighth grade with a similar target for year three outcome. Next slide, please.
So goal 1.3 focuses on high school and our student outcomes. And so you'll see just a sampling of our actions and expenditures with a focus on our freshman-on-track program as well as our Avid program, Avid standing for advancement via individual determination, as well as a heavy investment in our CTE program. And so we've seen dramatic results with our CTE program. And so we certainly want to continue to support that, especially like tonight, we heard the importance of economic mobility. And so this allows our students to be college and career-ready, to leave with certifications upon high school graduation. And then Cal Soap, Cal Soap is a program that our high school counselors deeply, deeply, deeply value. And so we are continuing our investment in that program. And then the academic counselor for Central High School, because we certainly need to continue to support our students at Central. And then next slide, please. We have a sampling of key metrics. And so what you'll see is that we have set some some ambitious goals for ourselves, right? So yes, we would, we we want 100% graduation. We would be absolutely ecstatic if we can get any, if we can get ninety-five or above. And so because we know that as we've gotten closer to that ninety-five, it just gets harder and harder and harder. But the focus will be to get ninety-five and above, continue to to decrease our dropout rate, increase the number of students that are meeting UCA through G college entrance requirements, have at least three hundred and fifty CTE require, CTE completers, et cetera, et cetera. And certainly to continue to grow the number of students that are participating in our AP program. And then that would certainly have an impact on our statewide data as well.
All right. As previously mentioned, this is our focus goal supporting our English learners. And we have a sampling of actions and expenditures here. So we have our ELD TOSA, who provides direct support to teachers and leads the EL facilitators or the Elfs, which are also mentioned on there. And those are teachers at the school sites who provide direct support to other teachers on campus and providing English language development classes, as well as monitoring the English learners on their campus to make sure they're making adequate progress. Continuing to provide professional development around providing effective ELD to students. And coming up with the development of a secondary long-term English learner-specific designated ELD to help reclassify our secondary students. Next slide. And here is a sampling of key metrics. And you can see that we're looking not just at the reclassification rates and a reduction in the number of long-term English learners, but also monitoring how students are doing with passing integrated Math 1. As was mentioned earlier, math is a significant predictor of success later in life. Next slide, please.
Okay, and goal 1.5 is about students with disabilities. And we focused that on inclusion. Again, some of the samplings of our actions include inclusion PD and coaching, on-the-job coaching for universal design for learning, for inclusion teachers and for co-teaching. We have money set aside for the steering committee that will do some support for an inclusion framework in Morgan Hill Unified. And hearing from our teachers, they want more on behavior, more on behavior, more on behavior. So we'll continue to support behavior de-escalation training for our staff and for our special ed support providers. And then we intend to implement a preschool inclusion program. And that is staffing for our preschool inclusion. Our metrics are lofty. As we continue to increase our students in the least restrictive environment, the state continues to move the bar up. So we fully intend to meet those targets. And we want to see greater than 75% of our students with disabilities passing IM1 with a C or better. And we want to see ourselves move to performance levels in English, language, arts and in math. Do you have any questions about goal number one?
Colleagues? Please, please.
Okay, I'm saving all my comments to the very end.
Same with everybody else? Or did you have a comment? Okay.
Okay.
Well, you could probably guess which goal I'm going to present on. I'm going to be presenting on goal number two. And so again, it's about promoting family and community engagement. And here is a sampling of some of the actions from goal two. Continue to staff each school with a community liaison to be that that bridge between home and school. And then, of course, in order to build their capacity, professional development for our community liaisons, in particular, helping them enhance their their translation skills and more strategies for reaching and supporting families. And then we have the continued development and maintenance of the family and community engagement center to continue to be that one-stop shop and continue building the resources there with a focus this year or in the next three years, helping to support the efforts around chronic absenteeism as being part of the the parent emphasis in education that we want to want to emphasize this year. And then continuing to support our D-LAC, E-LAC and IMPAC meetings as well. And then some of the metrics are around increasing the participation levels of the different services and resources that we're offering, increasing the satisfaction rate. It's already very high of those who participate, but we want to continue to build on that and and of course, make that higher. And then we also want to track more intensively and a little bit more deliberately the way that participation is being tracked. And then continue to build on communication with families, which has been sort of a conundrum that continues to come up, a theme where our families, on the one hand, feel that they get too much communication, but on the other hand, feel that they don't get enough communication. And so trying to 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 crack that nut and figure out what what we we can do about that to make that communication better. Any questions about goal two? Okay.
All right. So we're going to be doing goal three, which is student engagement, which focuses on enhancing student engagement, social emotional learning and creating a positive school climate. This is a sampling of our actions. So one, some highlights would be our school culture and climate supports and training. This would be helping to support behavioral support, professional development, community-building activities, cultural competency trainings. Examples of these would be restorative justice trainings in circles and then also PBIS training code and coaching. We also have collaborative partnerships for comprehensive social emotional support. So this is just building alliances with community organizations and mental health agencies to provide holistic support for students' social and emotional well-being. And then we also have homeless and foster support. So this is just going to be helping to provide hygiene kits, school supplies, VTA passes to students who are unable to access the school bus. And then we also wanted to highlight our care staff, who've been working hard to connect families to resources and services across the community while offering a safe space and a go-to person on campus. They were recently awarded the Hoffman Award. So we're very, very proud of them. Educational alternative placements. So this is just specialized educational settings or programs for students who require alternative approaches to learning due to academic behavioral or so- so- social emotional challenges. And then we have our school-linked services. And this is a grant-funded action. And it helps foster collaboration and partnerships between schools and community-based organizations to provide comprehensive support and resources to our students and families.
A couple of our metrics, a lot of our metrics are just designed, they're the metrics from our state. But a couple of them are chronic absenteeism rates. So we continue to be more ambitious, but we want a reduction. We recognize that chronic absenteeism has a lot of different factors into it. So we do want to continue to reduce chronic absenteeism. Our high school dropout, we want zero dropouts. We don't want any of our kids, we don't lose any of them, but we want to have 1% or less. In addition, we know our research shows that that connection to home visits and meeting families where they are in their home and building that relationship has a huge impact. So our continuing work with our care staff and and doing our home visits is a is a goal of ours with within that team. Also, continuing our number of outreach and events per year. We average around twenty, but we want to maintain or increase that next year and the years to come. And then one of the goals that wasn't highlighted but is funded in this space is our school resource officer. And so having him attend and participate in a number of our events is really important to build that community outreach and support. And goal 3.1 is our again, focus around wellness centers and social emotional learning and support. So a couple of highlights is our wellness team, so our mental health wellness counselors. So their positions specifically, as well as the wellness spaces themselves. And then the extension of our wellness center, wellness counselors at elementary so that we can continue the support throughout elementary, middle and high school. A couple of metrics is really looking at, this one's a little tricky because you want students to access mental health, but you don't want to have an increase in need for mental health. So it's a very interesting goal to create. And so we wanted to make sure that we have the, that we were really cognitive of that juxtaposition when it comes to that goal. So a number of visits to the wellness center during class times, we want to have maintaining consistent continuum of care. So it's really how do we provide that continuum of care for students during that time? Looking at the number of students referred to outside agencies and continued community partnerships, really the mental health engagement activities. So how are we hosting mental health engagement activities on-site and bringing awareness around mental health? The number of referrals to wellness centers, this was around how do we make sure that people know and have access to the wellness centers? And then really looking at the number of visits to students during non-class time. centers? And then really looking at the number of visits to students during non-class time so that they recognize that that space is there for them when they need them during non-class time as well. So calming spaces and et cetera.
Thank you. I think this the slide is there as like a break a breakpoint of just as we're developing the LCAP, you know, the timeline shows that we started thinking about this process right in September and kind of launching it. But there is no green grass under the feet of our EST or administrators or our teachers. We continue to focus, these are some of the the strategies in school district-wide reform efforts that continue. In addition, parallel with the development of the LCAP, we wanted to highlight the great work of the entire district and doing that. I'm going to go to the next slide. And so the next slide is the budget overview for parents, and I'm going to pass this over to my counterpart, who will be talking about that. So Ms. Timbo.
She's right behind me.
Okay, I only have one slide, but the the budget overview for parents is actually a seven-page document, and it is included in the full LCAP package. And it's just meant to be exactly as it says, a budget overview for parents. It's a snapshot of the budget pieces that go into that. So this first one is the revenues that we have to put out, what our total revenues are, and how much of that is LCFF and supplemental funds. So we call that out. Then the other pieces, I'm just going to really quickly go, we don't have slides for them. But we talk about the total budgeted funds in the overall budget of the whole district, and then we need to call out what's budgeted for the specific LCAP. And we do go over and above what is supplemental funds in our LCAP. Right now, it looks like we're at $18.6 million total LCAP, because we do cover grant funds and some of the other title funds as Dr. Jimenez spoke about earlier. So we call that out as well. What's the total budget? How much is the LCAP budget? And then we also go back into the annual update, and we look at what happened in 2324. We look at what was totally budgeted for 2324 actions and what we actually spent in 2324. And then we have to explain why there's differences there. So all of that is in the packet. And the other thing we have to do is call out specifically of the budgeted items, what's not included in LCAP. So that's about $125 million is not in the LCAP. And that's all of our general everyday stuff, right? It's all of our teachers, all of our staff, admin, transportation facilities, all of that kind of stuff. So that is your budget overview for parents.
All right, homestretch. All right. So local indicators, next slide, please. So these, as Dr. Jimenez initially mentioned, these are just our self-reflection indicators that are submitted before they're they're published, published when the California School Dashboard is made public. So every school district submits these in these areas that are listed here, basic services, standards, engagement, et cetera. So if we could go to the next slide, please. And so for basic services, we have met that requirement. We have appropriately assigned teachers. We are in compliance with the Williams Audit, both for instructional materials and facilities. If you could go to the next slide, please. In terms of implementation of state standards, we are overall full implementation across these categories that are listed here, and these are the categories provided by the CDE. And so in terms of professional development, instructional materials, academic standards, and then we have a different category for CTE, PE, VAPA, et cetera. And then our engagement with school leadership and providing that professional development for them and for their teachers. Parent involvement, we discussed, you know, we had 471 parents completed our LCAP survey, but that is only the survey that doesn't include all the parents from the SSC, from the E-LAC, from the D-LAC, from the forums, et cetera. So this is just the LCAP survey information, and you can see some of those results listed there. And then next slide. And so for student engagement, we had 2,092 students complete the surveys between grades five and 12 this school year. And so we see, we see the results there, you know, 94% agree that that they want to do well in school. And then we see that we've got some work in terms of, you know, building trusting relationships on campus. And and you'll see that sort of reflected in our LCAP actions, especially at the middle school, to trustee Yves Knutson's question, right? That's, that's a big focus for us. And then next slide, please. So access to a broad course of study. Really, this starts from elementary, right? Our students have benefited from, you know, our specials rotations the last several years. And so they're being exposed to VAPA, to to theater, et cetera, et cetera. And so that is access to an expanded course of study. It is above and beyond. And that's why we're seeing really, we're seeing increased engagement numbers at the elementary level. Students are connected, they want to come to school. And so now, how do we, how do we really recreate that at the middle school? And and certainly at the high school, you know, we're offering, now we're offering dual enrollment, we've got expanded AP, CTE, et cetera. And so we also meet this this requirement. And then there's a second slide, but that sort of goes into more of the same. And so for the final part, I will hand it off to Dr. Jimenez.
So the local indicators are part of the dashboard, right? They, we are encouraged by the State Board of Education and the California Department of Education to present them at the same time as we do the LCAP, right? Because they work in tandem, right? And the same thing goes with this federal addendum, right? So it is our strategic plan of how we will use those categorical funds. So when you see that in your packet, you're not going to see like a figures, right, expenditures, what you're going to see is alignment and strategy of how we intend to use those funds to help supplement and increase that. So the number ones, I was going to say bullet there, but it has like a little chart, it says the LCAP federal addendum is meant to supplement the LCAP to ensure that LEAs have the opportunity to meet provisions under the Every Student Succeed Act. The last one says the LCAP federal addendum should not drive the LCAP development, but the SFRs are like supplemental to the state funds, just like the LCAP addendum supplements the LCAP, right? So it's a very nice kind of dovetailing of that. Next slide, thank you. So what you see in bold is what I really want to stress tonight, that the LCAP addendum explains our strategy and our alignment of the use of these these federal funds to supplement our state funds. Those are called out in our LCAP. So you will often see an action that says in parentheses, Title I, that's a state, that's a, that's a federal fund, right? And so we need to call it out. Some examples of how we use federal funding, and in our case, that's Title I, Part A, Title II, Part A, Title III, Part A, and Title IV are some of these services that you'll see there. And those are outlined in some of the responses that we have to outline, like, how are you doing parent engagement? How are you increasing services for students with disabilities? So you'll see a lot of the writing that's in narrative form that describes what we're doing to meet those those underrepresented groups. Next slide, please. All right. So that is a little cross section of what I just told you of what we qualify for, for our ESA or federal categorical funding. Next slide. And then our next steps is we will be soliciting feedback from the community and the public review for the LCAP, the budget overview for parents. It's on our website, and it's available for people to be able to review here on in the district. We hope to come back to you on the 18th for approval of the LCAP, the budget overview for parents, the annual update, the local indicators, and the federal addendum, because those two last items have to be provided in tandem. And we're open for any questions now.
Right, colleagues, now's the time. Dr. Montes?
I'm going to be quick. So I have, after an analysis of the annual report and the update, here are my points. So you don't have to, you can take it and process it, but wondering, number one is the NWEA map. There's been conversation about changing this metric. One of the, I'm just wondering what's going to happen in terms of the LCAP. It's codified in there. What I would hate to see is this metric has been discontinued. So maybe I'm not, maybe what I said is not accurate, but.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat what metric?
The NWEA.
I got it.
Map. So I'm just putting that out there. So I'm hoping that in the metrics, the metrics that we find, that we can be consistent, or if not, that we're able to adjust them so that after first year one, it doesn't get discontinued. Under goal number 1.1 for SWD, I wonder if it would be helpful if we can add the CAAS as a measure. Currently, what's listed is just the CASP, and we do have a COM metrics when we're looking at the results. So I wanted to just note that, given that it is part of the CASP.
Family.
Family. In a few instances, I was, I was, I thought we could list the FTE. So for 1.1C on page 38, 1.2G on page 54, 1.3E on page 62, there's a figure number, it relates to positions. I thought it would be helpful if you can also lift list the FTE that are associated with that. On goal 1.2G, great to hear about the middle school counselors, the student voice data that was listed on page 49 clearly speaks to a huge need in terms of connectedness with the school. So excited about that. 1.3G student outcomes regarding CTE, AP, dual enrollment. What I don't see is the the student outcomes broken down by demographic. I think it would be helpful if we can include that within the data reporting.
Absolutely.
And for 131 on page 66, regarding CTE program, when we're looking at the annual report to the new LCAP, something that's being lost is the CTE pathway completers. I didn't see that codified in any of the goals that was listed. Maybe I missed it in my analysis. But I do find that data point to be extremely helpful. So I'm hoping that we can keep that in there. With regards to 1.4 EL data, our EL student, our students identified as English learners, I'm wondering if we are able to break down the EL data even further, newcomer EL, LTAL, even students identified as English learners with an IEP. These are helpful subgroups within the EL label that will help us be even more targeted when we're looking at graduation rates, so on and so forth. On continuing on the 1.4F on page 73, the percentage is not regard, it's not on reclassify, it doesn't capture the percentage for reclassification. So that would be helpful as well as the that. I will say that, given the the need of in the area of our students identified as English learners, on goal 1.4A on 76, I'm wondering if one ELD TOSA is enough. So I'm stating that, given the huge need that is clearly captured within the data metrics here, and all the amazing work that's being done, but is just a wonder. Conceptually, for goal 1.5 on the students with disabilities, there's a difference in how that academic achievement data is being measured. So here, we're looking at scaled score and difference from standard. And I'm wondering why the intentional use to measure it that way versus in the previous goals, we're looking at overall percent proficient that met or exceeded standard. So I, something to think about, but there's a difference in how we're measuring. And so can we be, is it possible to be consistent across the goals? Lastly, in the annual update of the LCAP, it specifically around goal 3OH on page 112 regarding the SRO, it talked about how in the new LCAP, we were going to include specific measurements, right? In the annual update, it talked about specific activities that were not, that were supposed to be completed by the SRO. In the new LCAP, we don't have any metrics specific to this goal. And so I'm hoping that by the time this document comes before us, we can identify some metrics that we're going to measure with regards to this particular goal moving forward. Lastly, an outcome for goal 2.0G on page 101, regard is regards to a plan on that encompasses community engagement. And I wonder if in this plan, we can also address how care, face, our SLS coordinators might work in alignment together, given the investment that we are making within their efforts. And so I have yet to see a coherence between these initiatives. And so that would be helpful for me. And I, President Isco, I apologize for the, but I want to be mindful of my colleagues. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Questions?
Questions are okay.
You should give them a screenshot even.
I think Kelly says she wrote it.
That was a lot. Thank you. One of my questions is, it's kind of for both of you two, I guess. When the LCAP was developed, the what budget was it based on? Was it based on the current projected budget? Is, I'm just curious how impending budget cuts is going to factor into it. And I asked both my questions at once. I'm sorry, I'm sleepy. And when I saw there were over 200 slides in just one part, I, I just, I did not read the entire LCAP. How are community schools factoring into this?
You want to take the first one about the, what do we budget, the LCFF supplemental?
Okay, so as far as budget goes, we are required, the the budget that's required in the LCAP is the $7.5 million of supplemental funds. The overage up to the 18 million becomes the title funds, as Dr. Jimenez spoke about. So those are really title funds and grants. Some, some of the restricted programs are in there, but the requirement is for the $7.5 million. And as we move forward and impending budget cuts, as you said, that number, whatever number that supplemental number is, that's what we have to show in the LCAP. And we may start having to tweak those things, different things may happen as to what ends up in the LCAP. But there are, there are changes that can be made.
And then for the community schools questions, they're outlined there. We're not required to outline community schools in our LCAP. We did so just to give the community a sense of how we have programs that work in tandem together to provide support for students. So you'll also notice that we have, for example, we called out the ELOT funds, right? Those are a separate bucket of money, but we call them out because it gives you a scope and a sense of the entirety of our programs before and after school and what happens during the instructional day.
Any other questions, comments? Let's see, Knutson.
Okay. On the elementary key metrics, it looks like the majority of it is I-ready. Are the, is that the only and best measurement for all of K5? Or do we use any other tests for K1, 2? Should we be using any CASP?
So at, we're in the process of reevaluating our assessment system for elementary to make sure that it best measures what it is teachers need to provide instruction. And to trustee Rosales-Montes' point, we didn't want to do a lot of changing methods. So we are planning to use the state indicators, the dashboard, the CASP, and the I-ready. But we also use other internal metrics. Right now, we're using kind of a hybrid of FMP and Literably. Teachers are still testing that tool out to see how it meets their needs. We currently use ESGI to document some of the TK tender stuff, but we're looking at possibly changing that to better align with the needs of students as the ages are getting younger. So we are using other metrics, and we'll be bringing them to you. They're just not codified in this document.
Thank you. And the school linked services 3.01, 159,000, is that a current position that?
Schooling Services is a grant, it's through behavioral health at the county. It does provide positions, it also provides parent outreach, it also provides community events and resources. So it actually is two positions, well, one and one and a half.
Thank you. And I appreciate the the FACE Center and the family and community engagement. I am interested in seeing the plan in more detail. It still seems fairly light to me in terms of the data and the number of families and parents that are attending. and parents that are attending the classes. And I'm wondering if our bilingual liaisons would have, have the parents been surveyed in that if there's a program at the FACE Center that, you know, 25 people show up at, would they show up at the middle school or at another site? Do we offer classes across the? Anyway, I'm wondering how it can expand, how it can accelerate, how we can work with all parents. And the data is not really looking there quite yet for me. And I share Dr. Rosales Monte's concern about ELD TOSA. I mean, it's, it's great to have an ELD TOSA, but we've had them for a long time. So what are we going to do different this year rather than last year? And how do we expand the, the English language ELD focus of what these students need at the middle and high school level to all their classes and not just an ELD support class? So anyway, looking forward to an ELD program and seeing that plan as well.
I think to speak to that, I think that once we bring to all of you the EL Plan for Student Success, I think you'll have a very good roadmap of what that looks like. And then we'll be probably speaking in a lot more detail what that professional development looked like, what those courses look like for long-term English learners at the high school and that development as well.
And one more question. As we're looking at the new curriculum for our PHONX program, I'm assuming that that bucket of money that will pay for that isn't, is it in here? Or is it in the regular fund under regular textbooks?
It's unrestricted lottery, so it's a separate bucket of money that's for instructional materials only.
Okay. And we're planning carefully for all of that because it happens every year. We need more books and things.
Absolutely.
Trustee Horner. Trustee Horner.
Sorry, I'm going to abbreviate it down to that was a lot of work. Thank you.
It's an amazing team. I'm really proud of their, all their amazing work and their dedication and just the weekends that they put in to complete the addendum, to go through that data. I can't speak highly enough of like their dedication. It is a 261-page document, doesn't include all the other things that we talked about tonight. And it's a great, it's just shows their commitment to making sure that we are aligning and looking all the data and aligning our funding. That's very limited in scope when you think about those seven and a half million dollars to what students, the best way to serve students in our district, so.
I guess I'll add just the one noticing with that, you know, this only allocates that fraction of funding, but many of the indicators, graduation rates, are actually much broader. So that's, and many of the goals set out in there are quite aggressive. You know, thinking of having seen this process over many years, many of those academic goals in particular for quite aggressive improvements. So it's going to be a heavy lift.
Yes.
I was wondering why we projected the current baseline and three years out and we didn't do anything for next year or the next year?
Right, that's what the template is designed for this year. It's the same reason there's no goal analysis, right? They just told us, find the baseline for this year and then make your best kind of projection. Because remember, this same LCAP that you, when you adopted on the 18th, we'll go through the annual mid-year review, right? Where we can come back and say, these are the metrics that, as Julie said, that we landed on, or these are the changes. So we'll be adding that next school year.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jimenez and staff. Oops, sorry. Trustee Patterson.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Thanks for sticking it out with us. On goal one, so I was focused only on, mostly on the next, the next year, the next three years. The middle school dips that we've been seeing as we've been looking at the data over the last 12 months indicates that obviously the special emphasis is required. When I finally got down to some of the action steps, if I'm not mistaken, then because the narrative around goal 3.2, just help, 1.2, help that middle schoolers do better is how I characterize it. Looking to action steps, get, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically what we're saying is to help our middle schoolers, we want to provide, make sure we're providing counseling support. We want to make sure we have, I don't think you said this, but plenty of tier one support. We want to make sure that we're using Avid with our middle schoolers. And so, and then we're going to measure it with iReady scores. I didn't understand how, it sounded a little vague to me, the middle school goal thinking. And then when I was looking at how we're going to make the middle school situation improve, it looked like the iReady scores were the only quantifiable data we were going to have. But did I read that wrong?
No, there's, there are other metrics as well in there. The iReady is obviously the one that we use on basically TK8, but we'll also be using the CASP data, the CASP data, and then there'll be metrics related to engagement. But some of those metrics about like supporting students, like with the wellness centers, they're going to land up on the other goals, right? So for like chronic absenteeism, right? It's called out in the red indicators, but they're in a different goal, right?
But specifically for 1.2, for 1.2, I think it was for middle school, it's under the CTE, the, right? I appreciate that we're addressing everything else in goals two and three when we're talking about sort of school climate and culture for middle schoolers. But I was just curious, how are we going to know that we're getting where we want to get with middle school performance based on what was in the plan? CASP data, iReady data.
And other internal measures that we have for our data also, yeah.
That didn't look super clear to me. Maybe I just missed it. So if you guys could just look at that so that it's, I can, I can say we have identified issues in middle schoolers in goal one area. And here's what we're going to do about it and here's how we're going to measure it. Family community engagement, so you know, our San Jose families, and I don't know about our San Martin Gwen families, but I know our San Jose families don't get to the FACE Center. And so I'm just curious, and it would be nice to see, what are we doing for the San Jose families in terms of family community engagement and the resources that are provided, you know, physically at the FACE Center? What, how does that help San Jose families? They're typically not going to drive south after, you know. And yeah, I don't know about San Martin Gwen, but I can tell you the San Jose families aren't at the FACE Center, except for one or two on occasion. It's my impression from what I see and reading here. So we definitely need to be providing more family support on every school campus. FACE Center is centrally located for a couple of school campuses. But yeah, I do really wonder what we can do in our outlining areas that are not convenient to the FACE Center for that kind of same support we're providing there. So that's on my mind and I'd like to see it in future, you know, in the future. And then lastly, 3.1 Wellness Centers, again, looking forward the next three years. On the slide where it said, maintain consistent outcomes, yada, yada. On so many different of the actions, then I had to look back and see, what did that actually mean? I think it just meant the numbers that we had baseline, we're going to carry over into year three? Okay.
So that's what Jesse was talking about, that once you identify needs, there's sort of like, do you want to?
Like mental health, you don't want to have an increase in needs of.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you come to the?
Thank you.
So that, that was, that's where we were talking. So when we talked about, when I met with wellness to talk about the metrics, it's a very interesting way to measure. And so, because you don't want to have an increase in need for mental health, but you want to have an increase in need for mental health because you want people to be able to say, I have access to mental health. Because you want kids.
But why couldn't we come up with, with outcome measures that talked about access?
Right, so because when you do that, you would say, so X amount of students are accessing mental health and we want to have an increase, but then the increase is measuring.
Percent of students who need it, get it.
Correct, but are you measuring, so then are you measuring the number of students that have mental health needs? Are you measuring the students that have access?
Percent of students who need it, get it. That's access.
Right, but you're also then measuring the number of students that have mental health needs. So it's very, but it's very tricky. And so when we talk about, so that's why we added the continuum of care. So it's essentially saying the students that need it, we're maintaining the continuum of care. So the students that currently are getting access, we're going to continue that number. So those that get it will be able to continue that continuum of care of access.
We don't have a way to measure the students who need it and don't get it.
Got it.
Trust, trustee Altman and then trustee Horner.
I'm wondering then if we could measure if students know how to access and, and they know that it's available.
That's optional. That's what the tools are and where they're.
Trustee Horner.
Yeah, and another suggestion, I don't know if it applies, but to trustee Patterson's point would be something like wait times or, 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 you know, like availability of accounts or something. So I think what you're getting at is availability and access. And then I understand the point Ms. Swift is making, we don't want more people to need this service. But some way of measuring when, when the need is there, you know, how, how well are we able to respond to the need? So I think that was the intent.
Yes.
All right, I'd like to move us on. We've got 12 more minutes. And I, I like, I like to move us to the next item, which is K5 Public Hearing, the proposed budget. And we've got, we've got two speakers. No, we have, we have another one. It's on here. There he is. Yeah. Right? Right, all right. So I'm going to open up, I'm going to open up the public hearing. And our first speaker is Armando Benavides.
Boy, I tell you, this is the longest meeting I've been in a while, so I'm feeling sleepy too. So I want to talk about the proposed budget. The current budget situation is a major concern for the community and probably all of our district employees. I do not see it as an issue where the, you, the leadership has or have mismanaged the budget. I see the problem arise because of the drop in revenue collected by the state. That drop in revenue has resulted in the loss of millions of dollars for our district. At the same time, our expenses have increased for many reasons. The overall 14% raise given to our dedicated teachers, classified staff is the school leaders, the high cost for everything and the high interest rates. It is a difficult position to be in and you will have to deal with a budget deficit. Unfortunately, this year, the district is going to have to rely on the reserves to make ends meet. I do hope that you put in place a plan that stretches out of reserves. I'm reminded of the habit caused by the 2007 recession. That recession lasted two years, but the recovery was slow and it took five years before California began to collect revenues that reached pre-recession levels. Now, I'm not saying that California right now is in a recession, but there's no doubt that it experienced a significant revenue decline this year and that it is predicted that next year's revenue will be a little worse. I anticipate that the future recovery will also be gradual. Budget deficits create a lot of anxiety in our community because the recourse available is to cut programs, services and employees. And Morgan Hill is the, are the largest employer here for Morgan Hill community. And so that definitely would impact families here in Morgan Hill. None of us want that. But I do look forward to hearing your collective decision as to how to address that budget deficit now and in the future. I know that the Santa Clara County Board of Education gave you until December 12. I do not see it as a crisis. I do not see it that we have to be concerned about it now that the fiscal budget is now falling apart. Otherwise, the County Board of Education, the Santa Clara County Board of Education would not have given you until December. They probably would have asked you to do it tomorrow. Get it to them. You have until December to plan this out, to work collectively with the community and to basically come up with a budget. Based on our collective decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anahida Yazdi.
Hi, I'd like to start a quick comment on tonight's time extension. Many families wanted to be here and many families, including myself, are working parents with young ones and long daily commutes. So scheduling a regular board meeting simultaneously with two critical public hearings placed at the end of the agenda is inequitable, I can't even speak, I'm so tired, unfair and undermines your commitment to inclusion. Back to the budget, I like to begin with emphasizing the critical need to reconvene the Budget Advisory Committee with community input. If we had done this back in January, when the county issued its first letter, we might have been positioned to make positive impact. I like to highlight that the decrease, the revenue decrease was 2.9%. It was fairly slight, going from $131 million to $127 million. The total expenditure did increase by 1%, going from $143 to $144 million. That leaves us with a projected deficit of over $17 million. So it is a structural deficit. And the district is planning to partially address this with proposed $5.5 million cuts and tapping into reserves, but it's still leaving us with a structural deficit that continues in the next two to three years. I also like to point out that the $5.5 million cuts lacking clarity in terms of its impact to teachers, class sizes, and ultimately student success in these financial documents that were released. And I like to point out that the other operating expenditure category makes up to 12% of the total budget, yet its breakdown is not provided and its dollar value reduction is less than the total dollar value reduction of the books and material category. So more transparency into the 5,000 to 5,99 code is needed. And finally, I like to address my concerns with the reserves balance that is going to reduce significantly in the next three years, going from 20% to 5.8. I won't get into the numbers. And the minimum is required 3%. One of the primary concerns highlighted in the county letters is the risk of fiscal insolvency and state takeover by '27, '28. So I'd like to really understand what the board is planning to do long-term with this. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing that there are no other speakers, I'm going to close the public comment. And we'll have Assistant Superintendent Timbo, who will be making some comments.
Okay, we're going to try to do this in five minutes?
Five minutes, go.
Questions? No, I guess? Any questions? Okay, I'm going to Lisa start and run through hers and then hopefully we'll get to the multi-year projection.
It's not possible. No.
I, I think it's important that you, we fully have time to go through it and understand it, which we, we are allowed to do that at the, at the adoption meeting because we had the public hearing piece. So, and there's still public comment time available up until late.
Yeah, trustee Horner.
Yeah, I mean, given where we are on the, on the schedule, I don't know what else is scheduled for our meeting on the 18th. But unless there's some pressing reason to do this business tonight, given there's only a few minutes left, I'm, I'm about to make a motion to table the rest of the agenda until the 18th, unless staff wants to say there's some really good reason not to do that. Please.
Trustee Patterson.
Alternatively, I'd like to propose we schedule a meeting next Tuesday night, 11th. An additional meeting to do these items.
Yeah, I'd like to have an additional meeting so that we can go through everything and think, let it sink in and then we can propose any changes. But the sooner we can figure that out, the better for our community as well.
Sounds good. We'll send out a survey and.
I would not recommend that. Tuesdays are hopefully work and I think a survey.
And I think a survey and getting back from people and.
All right, so. Let's see if we can work out.
So, Mr. President, if I may, I'll, I'll make a motion to table the rest of the agenda until, you know, as soon as possible, we reconvene.
Can I get a second? All right, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, all right.